Well, this meeting is supposed to start at 7:00, and it's 7:00. And we're supposed to have a quorum here, which is three select board members, and we have all five here, so we are ready to go. I think the magic phrase is calling the meeting to order. I don't know if I need to say the magic phrase, but I'm willing to. The first thing we're going to hear from is resident concern, so you might have something to say. We're going to have two minutes a person. If you need more than that, let me know before you start talking, and we can talk it through about whether you need more time. But two minutes is usually enough. If you've got something really complicated to tell us, your best bet is to send us an email anyway, because then we can reread it and make sure we understand the details. So go ahead.
Madeline Cruz, Seishan Way. I want to know if you were taking comments regarding item 10 now or when it comes up?
We'll be taking comments then.
Thank you.
Hi, Corinne Hogseth, Indian Village. So I sent a letter of concern to the Recreation Department last week regarding the drag show that's planned for June 16th at Nara, a place to call that was not returned. Being that this is the first annual Pride event hosted by the Acton Recreation Department, I think probably a more thoughtful approach could have been employed. Instead of going straight to drag shows, maybe just stick with Pride the first year, see how it goes. But by going straight, by including a drag show, the planners had to have known they were going to invite controversy, which I believe was part of their intent. Until very recently, just in the last few years, drag shows were always considered entirely adult entertainment. No one would consider this any more appropriate for children than a strip show, but I don't see the foxy lady taking her act on the road and coming up to schools and libraries and town events. I wouldn't have brought my kids to a Hooters. So how drag shows have suddenly become family entertainment in just the last few years is, you know, completely escapes me. And certainly with performer names like Anya Knees and cervix, this show will contain sexually explicit content, inappropriate for kids. And some will say it's not for me to decide what's inappropriate for other people's children, and they'd be right. If parents are fine with their kids watching NC-17 movies, they are free to do that in the privacy of their own homes, but that doesn't mean the town should be showing them in public. I will also say that as a woman, I find the current embrace of drag offensive. People who go to drag shows probably do so every now and then, I don't know, once a year for a bachelorette or a bachelor party, I don't know. But drag is now being forced into popular culture everywhere we turn. It's in the schools and the libraries, and now you want to expend town resources to have one in our town park. We can't escape these grotesque insulting caricatures. Would you host an act featuring performers in blackface? I don't think so, because it's racist. And to me, drag is to women as blackfaces to blacks. Security may also be an issue. This type of event may very well attract people from other communities, some for the show itself and others possibly to cause trouble. And I don't think, I don't think that that is a reference to just conservative individuals or groups. Storefronts in blue cities weren't boarded up before the 2020 election because people were worried that Biden would win and conservatives would riot. And I'm not saying I want anything like that to happen in Acton, but it's going to happen somewhere sometime, and there are people who want it to happen. They're looking for a reason to have another summer of love. Without throwing shade on Provincetown, Acton is not Provincetown. Yet some people seem intent on rebranding the town from what has traditionally been one that draws families who come for the strong schools, easy access to media routes, and end up staying for the friendly neighborhoods to a town-
I'm sorry, can you finish up? We're going to have two minutes a person.
There's always been on the vanguard of wokeness. Many of us are simply tired of this. Town committees and administration, including the Rec Department, serve all residents, not just the woke mob that has come to dominate all facets of our town and school operations. I hope the town will reconsider this decision. Thank you. And I didn't know that there was a time limit, there hasn't been previously.
Yeah. Other comments? We have two minutes each.
Very small one. Leo Fajman, Right Terrace. What's been done in the past when you have time limits, can you just give a little signal, like 15 seconds left allows people to easily get out of it? Thank you.
Thanks. Leela Ramatunda on Arborwood Road. I just wanted to say that queer folks have existed, do exist, and will exist. Number two, the Rec Department does serve all the residents, including the queer ones. Number three, no one is obligated to take their children to drag shows. It is entirely optional. Number four, it's not sexual inherently. It's just a performance, as is most other things that are considered theater or theatrical or performances. It's not a strip show. The equivalencies to drag face are grotesque and insulting. And there's going to be a drag show in Acton, which is exciting. So I highly stress do sign up. Thanks.
Stella Ko, Guswood Road.
Stella, I'm going to ask you to talk right into that microphone. I know, it's okay. It won't bite.
Okay, so one, I'm really happy that we're having a drag show in Acton. And I think that drag shows are, they create a safer space and a safer society for people of all representations, all presentations. And the goal is attainable only with the collaboration of people from all walks of life, whether we're straight cisgender people or queer or any. And we should all attend drag shows and change the world.
David, is there anybody online? Okay, well, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll hear from some online folks. Go ahead. You want to press that little button? Yeah.
Melissa Brown, Great Road. I came here tonight because I heard there was backlash against the Pride celebration being planned at Nara Park. I've been an Acton resident for 15 years, and this is the first time that there was a Pride celebration being planned, and I was excited to take my kids so that they could see other queer families and feel like they have community here in Acton. And I'm really discouraged to hear that there's folks in this town who want us to stay hidden and not have a sense that we're included in this town as well. So I would ask that you stay vigilant against the hate, against book banning, against this rhetoric, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Let's go online. Thanks for asking. Oh, Matt, can you go ahead and find out, let people in who want to talk from online? It said Matt was talking, and then it said Neejan Dataro is talking, but I can't hear anything. So we need a little tech fix before we can hear from folks. John has gone to a magic iPad to attempt to fix this. Don't worry, this is not part of your two minutes. You are unmuted, it says.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I have not heard back from the Recreation Department regarding my concerns about hosting the Drag Queen Story Hour at Nara Park, and hearing a few people speak before me makes it sound like it's such a G-rated event. Anyway, I have two main concerns, that this is open to minors-
Yeah, I'm sorry, Neejan. We're having still a problem with the volume, so we're going to try to make an adjustment and see if people can hear you better. Oh, I got louder. Can you? Yeah, also, so if you could talk directly into your mic, it'd be fun, it'd be easier for us to hear you. Why don't you go ahead?
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I have two main concerns. Normally, I would think that this is only for adults. Now, this is open to minors, 14 plus, and that it is in a public setting where non-consenting adults and families may want to enter Nara Park and they may not, and they won't be able to. So further, I wonder if the town council has been consulted on this event, given the fact that this involves material potentially not suitable for minors? I mean, somebody made it sound like it's going to be all G-rated stuff, but we don't know that, having seen how some of these drag shows happen in other places, in other schools, et cetera. It definitely is not G-rated. So I heard someone mention, not here, but that schools, museums, and libraries can stretch the definition of what is acceptable using "educational" value as a plausible reason. But does this apply to an entity like the Rec Department whose mission is not educational? I would like to know the opinion of town councilman's medal, because this involves potentially material not suitable for minors. I also want to know from the Recreation Director as to what limits she finds appropriate in her charter and why. Given that this drag show features performance called "On Your Knees and Cervix," and I don't care how you want to sanitize this, if you have performers called "On Your Knees and Cervix," it almost guarantees highly sexualized content, which begs the question, if a strip club asks you to enter Nara Park in the evening, will a permit be granted? If not, why not? I'm looking for a clear articulation about what this town finds permissible to allow in its public spaces, especially when minors can be present. And finally, to the select board and to the town manager, do either of both of you need to approve this, or does the Recreation Director bear sole discretion? If you did need to approve this, I want you to clearly articulate what you think the guardrails should be. Acton has prided itself on being a family-friendly town, and I want to know how far down the slippery slope you are willing to go in terms of being non-family friendly. Now, I have no problem with the Pride event as such, and Pride families can go there, et cetera. I have a problem with a drag show with these kind of names of performers and alcohol being served, and, you know, hopefully everything goes okay, but there seem to be a slippery slope in non-family friendly activities here, and I'm very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, who's next?
Carla Hyler. Carla, you should be able to speak. Okay, thank you. Carla Hyler, and I live on Nonsent Path. A couple of quick things. First of all, I understand McGovern asked for yet another postponement. I'm going to ask the Board of, the Select Board, to please consider asking McGovern to withdraw their special permit request until they're ready to actually present for people. Unfortunately, I cannot physically be there tonight, but I did want to make that request to you guys. The second one is regarding the drag show. I am of a certain age, where I grew up watching drag in the form of Milton Berle, and Flip Wilson, and Corporal Klinger on MASH, Bugs Bunny, and a whole variety of men in women's clothing. I do not find it to be equivalent to blackface. I would also say to people who are reacting to something, they either, a culture they either don't understand or know, that before they pass judgment, they actually see what's going on. Drag story hours, which I actually am very familiar with, are G-rated events. They're a story hour with somebody in costume. It is no different than somebody showing up as a Disney princess. It is not a strip show. It is not a burlesque show. It is not something other than what it is. They are people who are comfortable in a costume, or in a different persona, as any actor would be. Yes, some of the names are provocative, that's part of the culture, but that doesn't mean they're getting up there to do a drag show like you would see on RuPaul's Drag Race. This is an age-appropriate thing. Most drag story hours are actually quite lovely and quite entertaining and a lot of fun. So I would encourage people, rather than protest, and as my British friends would say, rather than get your knickers in a twist, please understand what you are protesting before you protest. So, thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
Madeline Seishan Way. I just have a quick comment regarding everything I'm hearing. I am a multiracial woman of color that has queer people in her family, and I absolutely love them. My children know about queer people, and that hasn't changed their perspective on who they want to be when they grow up. And if they choose to be queers when they grow up, I will support them 100%, and I support a drag show. Because I want to remind everybody that's putting this drag show down that you are the ones that preach that we're such a welcoming community, yet people like me and queers constantly have other people, you know, using derogatory terms or putting us down for who we are. Queer people are normal people. Let them be happy. A drag show is not going to change or damage anyone in this town. It's time that you practice what you preach, and if you say that we're welcoming, then accept the fact that this drag show is not a harmful thing. It's just a simple drag show. Suck it up.
Matt, is there anyone else online? Oh, no, go ahead. You were so polite before. Nobody else online, anyway. Okay, press that little button there.
I can't even read my own writing. I'm just wanting to say that I'm pretty-
I'm sorry to interrupt again, but could you introduce yourself also?
Oh, sorry. Barbara Green, Black Horse Drive, Acton. I'm astounded by the ignorance of this request to not hold the show. It's a clear reflection of the undercurrent of hatred and bigotry that's occurring in this country today. Drag entertainment, as we heard by a previous speaker, has been around forever, and not just in P-Town. I urge this town to allow this show to happen, this entertainment to happen. What is the message to our children in our wonderful schools if we say no? As we have seen in other states, this is just the tip of the iceberg. It starts with a mischaracterization of a drag show, and where does it end? And as we've seen in other states, it doesn't end. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have one person online still. Matt, can you bring them forward?
Of course, Mr. Chair. This is a column user, they could identify themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, this is Chair from what's back in, and I agree with what Carla and Madeline said, and I love drag. I think it is the most beautiful, fun thing, and I love the analogy to Disney and dressing up in masks. That's great. And so if you don't like it, don't go. I don't believe that this is at all harmful, and please learn about something before you criticize it. Please just comment, and if you don't like it afterwards, you think it's horrible, then, you know, maybe at least have some evidence to share. But my experience, and I can't even count how many drag shows I've been to in my life, they're wonderful. They have kids, the family-friendly ones are, you know, full of kids, and kids running around, being kids, and it's just great, and I thank you so much for bringing this to Acton. Bye.
Thank you. That's the citizens, that's the residents' concerns part. Let me stop my little timer thing, sorry about that.
I have another comment setting off the mic.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Chair update. This is my first Chair update, so excuse the length. Got a few things to say. So Minuteman. Minuteman Technical School, you may have heard, has put its superintendent on leave. That's Kathleen Dawson, who, those of you who were at town meeting, got to see her, she's the one who gave the presentation. She's on leave while they investigate, you know, various concerns that have been raised about her. Just want people to know that if you're trying to get in touch with Minuteman, things are a little bit chaotic over there right now. Nishoba Indians. So I've given the fellow, my fellow Select Board members, thank you, a copy of this new book, A History of the Nishoba Preying Indians. It'll soon be available at Silver Unicorn Books. It's also available from Amazon, and it's available directly from the author, Dan Boudillien, who lives in Littleton. The reason I brought it forward to my fellow Select Board members is as to sort of kick off at a future meeting, a discussion again about Indigenous people in our lives. And, you know, they're here, they were here hundreds of years ago, and they're still here. And this is a good book for learning about one aspect of that. If there are Select Board members that have thoughts about how we discuss this topic of Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'd recommend they contact the town manager so that we can, at some future agenda-setting meeting, we can sort out how to do that. Next. Okay, so later in this meeting, we're going to be hearing from people who have goals to suggest for the Select Board, because we have meetings coming up to go deeper into that. I wanted to describe what that was going to be. A goal-setting meeting itself, which is, it's an open meeting, but it's a Select Board-only meeting, we're not taking public comment, that will be June 12, starting at 6:00 p.m. The agenda will come out when we're closer to there. Tonight, we get to hear ideas from people about what they think our goals should be. We'll get more to that when we get to that agenda item. But people are also welcome to send us ideas by email anytime, up until the 12th of June. Sooner the better, though. At June 5, our next meeting, one of our agenda items will be to review the things that came up at town meeting, particularly the citizens' petitions. Some of those may appropriately become goals, so we want to make sure to discuss them, understand our point of view about them as a board before we proceed to our goal-setting session. So that'll be coming up on the 5th. Okay, that's it, except for the last comment. I want to appreciate that people spoke about the drag show. I just would really like to encourage people to understand a couple of things. One is that this is a ticketed event. The Nara Park is closed at that hour for visitors, so this will be people who have chosen to come see a show, and I certainly am looking forward to the show myself. The other thing is just, is a recommendation, that if you, you know, see women taking on the characteristics that you think of as male characteristics in their clothing or their accessories, or vice versa, or if you see, if you see selectmen who have fingernails that are a little bit pink and a little bit purple, I encourage you, instead of reacting with fear or derision, to be curious, or ignore it, either one's fine. But curiosity is a wonderful aspect to bring to things that are confusing potentially to people. It brings us together rather than separates us. Thank you. Manager update.
Thank you. Just a thank you out there to everyone for your patience with the several construction projects that are going on in town. The end will justify the means, I think, is the saying, and just a note to, when you're out there driving in a car, don't be distracted. Drive carefully. I wanted to, speaking of driving, on great, you know, we've done some design work on Great Road to try to make it safer for pedestrians and for cyclists and for everybody. And we did some design work on the section that goes from 27 to the Concord Line, and we're now finalizing concepts for the section of Great Road that goes from Route 27 to the Littleton Line. And we're having a meeting in this room, May 23rd, which I think is tomorrow, at 6:00 o'clock, so I'd encourage you to come. If you have ideas on how to make that road safer, if you just want to see the designs that we've come up with, which are pretty good, I encourage you to come out and check them out and give us your feedback. If you can't make it, we do have a website, and our Public Works Director, who is actually here with us today, is always available to talk to you about some of the things that we're working on. So just a note on that, a great road, and drive carefully out there. Changing gears to West Acton, we are excited to announce that we have a pop-up space that we're hosting on a short-term basis. It's, I think, a very small space that if you are starting a business or know someone that is, I'd encourage you to get in touch with our Economic Development Office, Julie Pierce. It's partially funded through a grant, so it's a pretty reasonable cost, and you can use the space to start your business or get people excited about a small business that you already have. The location will be 577 Mass Ave. It'll be working out of a pop-up box, I think it's called, and so I'd encourage you to check that out, and if you have any questions, reach out to us. Thanks.
There might be Select Board members who would like to say something during our member minute portion. David?
Thank you. Two things I have tonight, two very different things. First, I'd like to address the comparison made earlier between drag and blackface. Blackface exists to mock African-Americans. Drag exists to show affinity with someone's feminine side, the case of a drag queen, or masculine side in the case of a drag king. Blackface is about hate. Drag is about sharing feelings and experience and humor. So that's just a reaction to the speaker earlier. The other thing which I wanted to share today was, on a couple of days this week, I went to the 7th grade civics fair presentations, and it was very impressive. You know, it's kind of like a science fair, but for civics, and the 7th graders all chose topics to present in a little infographic design on their computers. And the breadth of topics was very impressive. I'm just going to read off a little few I could remember. Climate change, fossil fuels, death of coral reefs, healthcare access, immigrant rights, social media addiction, voting rights, women's rights, animal cruelty, body shaming, childhood homelessness. These are the things our 7th graders are thinking about, and I continually be, I am amazed by and impressed by our students. Thanks.
Dean?
Yeah, in regards to the discussion that, from the citizens earlier, the, I think it's important for everyone to know that, you know, the Recreation Department pretty much runs autonomously. The Select Board has never been involved in the past with endorsing, or criticizing, or critiquing whatever events they might have up there at Nara Park. So I think if anybody has the implication that this is something that the Select Board got involved in and that we're pushing an agenda, I'm certainly not aware of that, and wasn't even aware of that particular drag show that's being discussed until I got some emails about it. You know, the Pride Festival, I think we all knew about, but, you know, it's something that the, we've got a Recreation Commission, we've got a Recreation Director and staff that put these things together, and we don't really get involved in the nitty-gritty of these particular situations. However you might feel positive or negative, I think because this has been so controversial, it would probably be worthwhile after the event, if the town manager could come up with an after-action report, let us know what happened for those of us who don't end up getting there, and see if there's any issues, any lessons to be learned. It could be, you know, discussion of content, or it could be situations where we decide, you know, in the future, we should have more security, less security. you know, in the future, we should have more security, less security, just sort of fill us in afterwards, you know, after we see what happens. I know this is a politically-loaded discussion, and it's not an agenda item on our agenda tonight, so I'm not going to get any further discussion, but I think it's worthwhile to think about that, and, you know, be able to do a recheck back in after the event. Thank you.
Alyssa?
Thank you. I don't mean to step on your toes as school committee liaison, but I receive emails because I happen to work in the schools, and I just wanted to share a couple of items with the public. There have been some concerns about the retirement of both the town and the district finance staff, so I just wanted to give you an update from Superintendent Light, that this year they made some changes to the Operations Department, and consolidated the Director of Operations with the Director of Finance, and Dave Verdelino filled that role. He's going to be replaced by Sherri Matthews, who's starting July 1, and she is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations for Weston Public Schools. And Mark Hamel, not the actor, H-A-M-E-L, is going to be stepping up to the Facilities Coordinator role. He's currently the Building Superintendent for the City of Somerville, and he'll be starting later this month. The Custodial Manager and Capital Projects Manager are both departing at the end of the year, and Brendan Hearn has been promoted to Capital Infrastructure Project Manager. He's currently working in the IT Department, and does work for the high school and the audiovisual projects. So he's going to be focusing on large-scale project management in both facilities and technology, and they'll post a vacancy for his replacement in the coming days. And also, Graduation at the high school is June 2, and I wanted to let everybody know that they are still in need of 50 volunteers. So June 2 is less than two weeks away. For those of you who aren't familiar, Project Graduation is an all-night, substance-free event for our grads, keeps them off the roads. They have live music, food, games, prizes, and the Project Graduation Committee is seeking volunteers who are parents of students who are not seniors, so in younger grades, or recent graduates, or even folks without kids. I'm going to be volunteering, I'm looking forward to it. There is a Corey check requirement, and you can sign up to volunteer at abprojectgrad.org. Thanks.
Right before we go to the next hearing, I remembered I had even more to say in my board update. Hopefully this will not be a practice going forward, but a lot of things have accumulated. First of all, I went to the grand opening of Northwoods Kitchen Design at 128 Great Road. The Select Board was invited. It was a great event. Seems like really good people there doing, you know, kitchen remodeling, both they have designers there, and they also have a building and construction crew, so I recommend them. A nice new local business right on Great Road. The other thing is that, so I do have a, I do have a long, half-baked list of ideas about little tweaks and changes to the way the board functions, in the direction of increasing the comprehensibility of what we do, and the transparency of what we do. I'll be rolling those out after I have more time to review them with, in some cases, the town manager, in some cases, my fellow board members, in other cases, it might involve town council. But the first, the first thing we're doing is we're adding on a new item to the end of the agenda called Meeting Evaluation. This is a practice that we've done, I've done in other nonprofit groups. It would be a chance for the board members, just the board members, this isn't a public participation part, to reflect on, you know, what went well, what didn't go well, what we might want to, you know, make sure to remember to do next time. I'll go over the ground rules when we get there, but I just wanted to give people a clue that suddenly there was this weird new agenda item at the middle, at the end of the agenda. And that'll be helpful as we're trying, if we're trying new experiments, it'll be a good chance for us to, you know, reflect on how they worked. That was it. Okay, now, the first of the public hearings. This is one that's going to be continued to June 26, so one of the things I'm inquiring about is whether I actually need to read this entire text, but for now, I will. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on May 8, 2023, at 7:10 p.m., continue from April 24, 2023, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually, actonma.gov/meeting/bos, on the application of M A G R E Holdings-Acton LLC for a site plan special permit under zoning bylaw sections 10.4 and 6.7.9 at 1 and 5 Nagog Park and 599 Great Road to redevelop the property into an automobile dealership. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online in an Acton Town Hall. And here's one of those stupid, long URLs that I'm supposed to read. Does anyone need me to read that again? No? Okay. And the applicant has requested a continuance for June 26, 2023. Now, it could be that board members have comments on this, but let's start with a motion, if anyone wants to make a motion to continue.
I move we continue until the site plan special permit 2/27/2023-490, that we continue until June 26, 2023, 7:10 p.m. in this room.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Any comments from the board before we take a vote?
Mr. Chair, so I just, as the Select Board member that's been assigned to shepherd this through, I just like to let folks understand that the initial plans that some people saw went through a fairly rigorous review with our planning staff and other town officials. There were issues detected in the plans, which is not uncommon. The applicant has taken those back and is attempting to work through with a brand-new set of plans. So, you know, a lot of the concerns that people have raised might still be valid, or might not be valid, after the new plans have come out. So, ask people to withhold comments until they've actually seen the plans, and, you know, I think it's a hopeful sign that the applicant is asking for such a long continuance, so we'll know that they'll have plenty of time to work out any issues, and get staff review from town officials, and then be able to react to them. So I look at it as a positive point. We're in kind of the same situation, I believe, that we ran into with the energy storage facility on Discovery Way, that took quite a while. It appears to me that the use of that area as an automobile dealership is in compliance with zoning, so, you know, an outright denial is just not something that we'll be able to do, or I'd be surprised if we were able to do it. So I think it's more a matter of what can be done to improve the plans, how might the applicant react to some of the staff comments, and certainly the numerous emails that we've all received. So, you know, something is probably going to happen there, but people should withhold their judgment till they see what it actually is. Thank you.
What is the difference between withdrawing and application, or to just keep it just continuing? Is that, is that, what is the word I'm looking for? Is that advantageous to the McGovern, to just keep it continuing?
It's the routine procedure. I defer to the town manager or town staff to comment on that.
There's certainly the case that many of these hearings get continued while items get addressed before they come back and ask the board to make a decision. In terms of why not withdraw it, that's a business decision. I think there are costs and time associated with filing, and if you withdraw, you have to incur those again.
Thank you.
We've had a motion and a second. There's no more comments, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of continuing this hearing until June 26, at 7:10, please say aye or yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's that one. Okay, I got through my first hearing. Let's do another one. Okay, "The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on May 22, 2023, at 7:15 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at Town Hall, 472 Main Street, and virtually on the application of True West Brewing Company LLC, located at 525 Massachusetts Avenue, Acton, MA, under Chapter 140, Section 181 of the Massachusetts General Laws, for an entertainment license for acoustic and vocal music. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Login instructions for computers can be found here. From a computer, please click on the link to join the public meeting, actonma.gov/meeting/bos, or from a telephone, dial 646-876-9923 and enter webinar ID 503918785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak." And let's start this by hearing from the applicant.
Thank you to the Select Board for having me back quickly, and I also wanted to say thank you very much to my neighbors, that I did wind up meeting with several of them, and it was facilitated by John and Julie, and thank you specifically to John and Julie for taking the time to do that. So we've got an entertainment license application before you for acoustic and vocal entertainment within the brewery, as well as, as weather permits, outside on our patio. We did wind up meeting with the neighbors, and I think we, I think hopefully we came to solutions on several things that were really outside the purview of the entertainment license itself, but did have to do with noise overall. That's several accommodations that we're going to be making at the brewery, as well as an investment, about $3,000 worth of additional audio equipment, some additional research that we've done, as well as some additional acoustic panels on the front of the interior of the building, and we're going to be doing some signage that we're having built right now for us that'll be appropriate to Village Works, that will ask our patrons, when they're leaving, to kindly be considerate of our neighbors and keep their voices down. And I, you know, I wanted to say thanks again to my neighbors for sitting down and listening, and, you know, certainly coming to a compromise, I think, on both sides.
Thanks. So the way we're going to do this from here is we're going to hear from board members, they might have questions or comments, then we'll hear from the public, and then we'll proceed from there. So there might be board members that have questions or comments. David?
My concern about the noise is, I'm particularly concerned about noise after 9 o'clock, and maybe 10 o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays, but 9 o'clock on other days. When you were discussing with the neighbors, was there an agreement not to have the outside speakers at, after 9 or 10 o'clock?
Yes, so you'll see that in the entertainment, the application as it stands now, it's for outdoors would never be past 9:00 p.m., but 10:00 p.m. for indoors on Friday and Saturday. The piece of equipment that I was not able to find when I had had previous discussions, one of the things that we did a while ago when we were asked was we separated the exterior speakers from the interior speakers, so they could, the volume could be controlled independently. We trained our managers and our assistant managers, and we had discussions about it, and we even posted things next to the sidewalk station. Unfortunately, that required a human being to turn the volume knob down, and people sometimes forget. So that caused our neighbors to be upset several times, and so I spoke with a friend of mine, that's actually a sound engineer that works in film and television, and they directed me to a piece of audio equipment, a premixer, which requires me to buy an additional amplifier that just powers the outdoor speakers, but what that allows me to do is set the outdoor speakers on scenes at times of the day and days of the week, so that at certain times of the day, it will actually decrease the volume automatically, and then by a certain time, it'll bring it all the way to a, what we said we will mutually agree on is a minimum level. The neighbors have acknowledged that there are times when they can cross the street and get to the sidewalk on the True West, the Village Works side of the sidewalk, and realize that there is music on, that they couldn't hear on the other side of the street, and the goal would be by 9:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. at night, that the music would reduce to that level. And we discussed with John and Julie that once that, once that equipment is installed, which is supposed to be done on Tuesday or Wednesday of this week, we'll invite them together, and we'll all agree on a sound level that's amenable to everybody, and we will, we'll proceed from there as far as the time. We also agreed that on Tuesday nights when we have trivia, again, this is all outside the purview of the entertainment license itself, but some things that we were trying to do to be accommodating, that the speakers on the front side of the building will never, will never be on, that we'll have that system that we're installing shut them off automatically at 6:45, so that when, at 7 o'clock, when that does start, that they'll never, the front ones will never be on. They did agree that, one of the things that we discovered over the last couple of years, and I do appreciate that, I do appreciate that the public emergency is over, but we still do have a number of patrons that won't come back. They won't come back to indoor anything, and we've been getting a number of calls of people that were excited for us to bring music back outside, and people, for us to allow trivia to be outside. And what we agreed with the neighbors was, if we do get a request specifically from somebody that doesn't feel comfortable coming inside, there is a table on the side of the building, and that speaker has, there's one speaker there, and that can be controlled individually, and they said that would be fine if we turned it up so that just that small area and table could hear it to play. But that would really be on a case-by-case and as-requested basis. The biggest part of this, this new equipment is that it doesn't require human intervention, so it can't be forgotten, and that the only people that will know how to override it, they'll actually have to do it by logging into an admin console on a computer, so they won't be able to go up and mess with the buttons unless they pull the plugs out, and then it just turns everything off. But, so it's, I would say, as close to tamper-proof as we can get it from some of the high school kids that potentially work there. Yeah.
I'm just going to read the changed part of the entertainment license for my fellow board members and anybody who's listening. And obviously, you've covered a lot of material that, as you said, is not part of an entertainment license, so I really appreciate you working that out. But I just wanted to say out loud the parts that's actually written down here. The days of hours of entertainment, indoor, outdoor, on Village Works premises, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 4 to 9 p.m., Friday, Saturday, 12 noon to 10 p.m., outdoor until 9 p.m., Sunday, 12 noon to 8 p.m. No entertainment on Mondays, or earlier than 4 p.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, except allowance for holidays. Thanks. Are there other board members that have questions?
Thank you. I really appreciate the investment that you've made in the system to allow that to be automated, rather than needing to be manual, and all of the changes that you have made to the programming that's outside of the entertainment license. But my concern that I want to share with you and the board members is that in terms of the entertainment license, the email communication that we've been getting from the neighbors is that their preference is to have the live music, the acoustic music, indoors with the windows and doors closed, similar to the Frolic and Detour license. And I understand that the sizes of the restaurants are very different, but for consistency's sake, and because that decision was made due to a better concerns with the noise, I don't see how we can make a different decision in this. see how we can make a different decision in this case. And in terms of live music indoors and space restrictions, I've been to several house concerts in town where, you know, the band sets up in a, in a living room. So I know it's possible to have the live music indoors. So I would propose that we very seriously consider doing the same thing for consistency's sake that we did with, that this board did last July with Frolic and Detour, and have the license be for indoors. And I hate to do this, but when I was looking at entertainment license and the general laws that govern the licensing authority, it appears to me that the entertainment license is actually the general law, Chapter 140, Section 183A, which covers somewhat, an entity with a vitaller or alcohol license, is only addressing public entertainment Monday through Saturday. And so Sunday is actually covered under a different section, and that requires not only the local licensing authority, but the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety. So I think that we need to be in compliance with, with the state law regardless of how archaic it is. It, you know, hearkens back probably to our Puritan origins for, I think it's called Sunday Blue Laws. Yeah, that.
Thanks. Oh, go ahead.
This is directed at Pete, if I could. What are the months that you actually have outdoor entertainment? I mean, you're not doing that in January.
Correct. So it's only, it's really weather permitting. So we would typically have started, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So it would typically start in the month of May and, you know, go into the fall, but it's really October, yeah, as the, as the, as the weather permits, correct?
And I also wanted to just note that I'm pretty sure that that Frolic and Detour license was for an event. It was for a specific event. It wasn't, am I not correct? No, it wasn't for a wedding that was loud, no?
Any other comments before we start stumbling our way towards motions and amendments? Okay. There might be public comment before we proceed. Any public comment in addition to the letters we received? Okay.
I'll tear up my sentence, sorry, I was just driving to get here. Question. So have the residents, I didn't get a chance to look at the comments, are they in agreement with the proposed license?
The letters that we got recommended that we not approve an outdoor license.
At all?
Right. I don't know if we heard from all the residents, but the residents we did hear from, that was what they were saying.
That's too bad. And then there's, there was going to be a meeting with the residents and the, from the, the club?
Yes, there has been one meeting already, and there will be an additional meeting when this, the new audio equipment shows up that allows them to adjust the volume separately in different places.
Okay, well, I'm very sorry, but I do hope that you table this until you see what the new equipment does. Thank you.
Thanks. So what I'm hearing so far is I'm hearing the ideas of a general motion to approve, but I'm also hearing some, a potential amendment from Melissa about, let's see, two, two items, really, not approving the outdoor aspect of it and potentially requiring a look into the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety requirement before the Sunday entertainment proceeds. Okay.
If I, if I could just, it does require approval from the local licensing authority, so I'm comfortable, you know, with this board approving. I just think that we need to look into whether or not we also need to go to the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety for that additional approval, just so that we are in alignment with the state law.
Got it, thank you. So let's start off with a, with a general motion around approving the license as is, and then we can consider some amendments. Dean?
Aye. I move that we approve the entertainment license request as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And then we have a potential amendment. Do you want to say that out loud again?
Sure. I propose an amendment to have the music be indoors with the doors and windows closed. Is that sufficient?
Great.
Okay.
Is there a second? Well, it's such an interesting topic, I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Are there any other discussion points on the notion of having it be outdoors, I mean, indoors only?
David? Sorry, I think it's very difficult to succeed in the restaurant industry today. You know, there are a number of places in town where our restaurants are not succeeding. True West is a, is a restaurant that is doing better than some, but it's a, it's a lot of work to do that all the time. And, and True West has become an important place to meet in the community. It's important to people in, in West Acton and in other parts of town. And it's one of the few places, I think, a kind of neighborhood drop-in that we have in town. And I think it's important that we let the, the music be outside to, so that this, you know, this restaurant can succeed. In addition, I think it contributes to an ambiance of, in, in West Acton, which promotes a West Acton as a whole. And I think it promotes the, the business area in West Acton. Again, it is a struggle today for our businesses to succeed, right? It's a struggle for retail, it's a struggle for restaurants. And I don't think we want to keep continually putting up barriers in, in front of them. And I think things like music, well, I think, first of all, the complaints that I heard last time were, were more about noise levels in other areas than the music itself. The music is there a minority of the time, and the residents were complaining about a number of different issues. And I also think the music, or any, you know, the, the noise levels outside varies from place to place, right? The, there are different expectations on noise levels in different parts of town, and the noise carries in different ways depending on where you are in town. So I am definitely not in favor of this amendment.
Dean?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's been discussion about the situation of Frolic and Detour. I think that, you know, that's a false equivalency. I think, you know, that you look at the, you know, the architecture of the buildings, you look at the event that people reacted so badly against, was certainly not acoustic and vocal music. I think the board acted very quickly in making the decision that we did. And I think that there's, it's, there was not the opportunity for the back and forth. We didn't have a situation with the, the owner of the property, meeting with the neighbors, looking at, you know, electronic solutions to it. So I, I don't see that there's definitely a, an equivalency. And maybe if Frolic and Detour wants to come back and, and discuss all of these things, we might look for a different entertainment license. But I think it's worthwhile, I second everything David said about the importance of, of music to this venue. And I think it's worthwhile, grant the permit. We'll have one season to check it out, see if there's any issues. It'll expire at the end of December anyway, and we can evaluate it based on actual experience. So I would not be in favor of the amendment.
So I think that the equivalency here is that the neighbors were disturbed. And in the case of Frolic and Detour, it sounds like it was a one or two-day event that prompted complaints from abutters in Nagog. This has been going on for years. And the neighbors did everything right. They approached the owner of True West over several years. When the resolution was not forthcoming, they approached the owner of West Acton Village Works, Mathias Rosenfeld. When the resolution wasn't forthcoming, they finally brought this issue to, to the town, to the board. And I think this is a win-win situation. I am not suggesting that we deny the opportunity to play music by this restaurant. I think that the music can be indoors, and all of the patrons who are indoors can enjoy it, and the people that are in the apartment building across the street don't have to hear that music when they're inside their homes, trying to read a book, or have a conversation with the people that are visiting them or that they live with, or watch television. So I think that all of the solutions that they worked out in that meeting have to do with everything else. It has to do with the music, the recorded music that's played over the outdoor speakers and the trivia and whatnot. This is the live music that is so loud, once or twice a week, that goes on for several hours, that's disturbing their enjoyment of their own home, you know, their peace and quiet. And I think it's a public health issue. Noise pollution has been a public, known as a public health issue since 19, I don't know, 68, 55 years. It leads to stress, it leads to blood pressure, which can lead to heart disease. And, and this is not, you know, a concert, a rock concert, where the decibels are 90 or 100. This is just, you know, regular restaurant, entertainment venue, noise, traffic, things like that. So obviously, since I made the amendment, I'm in support of the amendment, and I'm in support of this board making a win-win situation for the applicant of the entertainment license and also the residents who live across the street.
I'm torn on this one. I, because I do, I do, I can, I am seeing the residents' letters and hearing their voices. I still think that the appropriate compromise is what's in the permit, which is limiting the hours. And the additional things that the owner is going to do about, you know, automatically turning down the outdoor music seem like really important steps. So I guess I'm with the notion of let's, let's, let's not have this amendment this time around, let's see how it goes. We get to approve these licenses every year, so we'll, we'll know a lot more in a few months about how much things have changed. There's a hand up online. Why don't you go ahead? Matt, can you let the person speak? Yes, Mr. Chair, they should be able to speak. Lynn Parker?
Hi. My hand was up before when you asked about the neighbors, and I just wanted to make it very clear that I could not attend the meeting, I was at work. And I'm not sure about the date and time, I could not attend because of my job. And I am in no way in agreement with the compromise, so-called compromise, that the, that has been presented to you, as if all of the neighbors are in support of such a compromise. I just wanted to be very clear in that. I sent information concerned about noise pollution. I'm very concerned that our very health is in danger. I just want to make, make sure that that's part of the conversation. I did not compromise with anyone. I'm not, not saying I'm not willing to listen to people, but I was not part of the conversation that he mentions. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Another point. Alyssa?
Yeah, I just want to speak to that point. The application was dated May 12th, and this meeting with the neighbors happened on May 18th. And the applicant on May 8th said that he wanted to withdraw the application and craft something that the neighbors could, were, were comfortable with, and that did not happen. There are many accommodations that are related to the activities outside of this entertainment license, but the application for the entertainment license came in six days before the meeting with the neighbors.
Thank you. Yeah, let's, let's hear from our Select Board member first.
And this is probably no help at all, but from, from the last meeting, I get the impression that no noise is the objective from the neighbors. And I, I feel like that that's not attainable for a restaurant. And I think that moving forward with, with the application as it is and having an earmark in December is, is what we should do.
I'd state that during the hearings, for a building of that size, which was allowed under zoning supposedly, I have some disagreements about those measurements, but there were long guarantees by the owner, the developer, we won't disturb the neighbors, and so now the neighbors are disturbed. So license or no license, I feel like people got to honor their statements. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to speak briefly. I absolutely acknowledge that it's been going on for, for, you know, for a while. I, I do, I, I, we have been responsive, and the way that I'm hearing it sort of characterized is like they've put in complaints and we've ignored them. That, that's not, that's not actually the case. And we have made changes in the past at their request. I've provided them with my personal cellphone, which they have used on several occasions. And I'm, I'm pretty confident that with, with a few exceptions, and, and the, the times when that was used was, were the times I'm referring to when a manager forgot to turn the music down, for example. I would get a, I would get a tech message from, from my neighbors whom I voluntarily gave my personal cellphone to, and I would make sure that within 10 minutes, it was immediately turned down. I know there were times when they've called the restaurant on a very busy night, and they've spoken to a 15-year-old hostess who didn't know that she had the ability to turn the music down. And I've apologized for the fact that we don't train the hostesses how to work the stereo system, but if you just ask for the manager, the manager will immediately have it done. So while I, I'm not going to say that we were perfect every time, I, I do, I do want it to be known that we have made attempts in the past, and I think the overall, the larger problem having to do with the, and Lynn, I'm sorry that you weren't there, I apologize, I, I left it, I, I put it out and said I'd meet whenever anybody wanted me to. And with regards to the timing of the application being put in, I was told that I needed to have the application in at a certain time so that we could have it for this, or it wouldn't be valid for the Select Board meeting timing. And that, I, but I'm, I'm, I was more than happy to sit down and craft some information, and that, that's what, what is in the application goes along with what the neighbors that were there, what we, what we discussed. In addition to all of the things that aren't in the application that have to do with the changes in the accommodations that we've, we've tried to make in order to address the other concerns as well.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move to firstly, a vote on the amendment. So the amendment is to have this be a license for indoor entertainment only. So people could indicate, let's see, how do we do this? If you're in favor of the amendment, please say aye or yes?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, and then if you're not in favor, please say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay also, so the amendment doesn't carry. Now we'll go back to the main motion of approving the entertainment license as is. Any more comments from the board? Okay, then I guess we've had a good conversations about this, and I appreciate everyone's participation in the conversation. Those in favor of the, of the, of the entertainment license as, as, as presented to us, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, that's four to one. That passes. So there's the entertainment license. What I heard was, you know, let's come back to this in December, when it's getting close to entertainment renewal, license renewal time, so we can learn from, you know, the, the residents and from the owner about how things are going. Thanks. Thanks. Okay, item five, appoint Joanne Norton as town accountant. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Uh, it is my great pleasure to reintroduce to the board, uh, Joanne Norton. She, uh, a few months ago, the board appointed Joanne as our acting town accountant after the retirement of Lisa Wodrick, and this is actually her second, uh, time serving in that role, and she's done a tremendous job. Uh, and I'm here tonight asking the board to formally appoint Joanne as our town accountant, uh, which is a three-year term. And Joanne, uh, has worked very hard for the last ten years for this community, and I believe she has something she wanted to say too.
Well, thanks. Um, I've just wanted to let you know that in the ten years I've been here, almost ten years, in, uh, July, I've been the payroll coordinator, the assistant town accountant, the acting town accountant twice now, and, um, I've enjoyed every minute working for the town. It's a great town and place to work, and there's a, a lot of good people to work with here, so, um, I'm just looking for your support to get appointed, so. Do you have any questions?
Um, sure, I have at least one question. So you've been acting accountant a couple of times before, and I was wondering, when, when you stepped into that role, was there anything that you found, I don't know, either surprising or interesting as you, you know, got that change in, in, you know, in authority and responsibility?
Um, what I did find is that there's a lot of funds, there's a lot of grants, there's a lot of trust funds, there's a lot to, to oversee. So that was, that was a surprise to me, that, that there's so much, so, um, yeah.
Thank you.
It's interesting though, very interesting, so.
Um, other comments and questions from board members? One of the things, uh, one of the changes that, um, John and I discussed was, um, that in the material that we get, we now have possible motions that, that are just written down to make it slightly easier for us, so.
Okay.
Uh, I, I will, I will note that there's something written down here that I'd very much like to say, which is that I move that we appoint Joanne Norton as town accountant. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Any other additional comments? No, all those in favor, please say aye or yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, thank you for continuing to serve as our town accountant. Now you're actual town accountant.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much for your support, and I look forward to this, um, to serving the town and expand the capacity, so, thank you.
Great. The next item is discuss analysis related to curbside solid waste collection and approve plan to conduct public outreach. Um, Mr. Manager, can you take us into this?
Thank you, yes, so we have a team, uh, that's been working on this with our partners at Mass DEP, and they're going to, um, give a brief presentation. Uh, so just to frame what, what this is, is as part of the climate action plan, one of the things, or one of the several things that we looked at is, is how town services impact, uh, the climate, uh, in terms of, um, energy use and all the other things that they'll go into in more detail here. Uh, and so I think the, with a grant from Mass DEP, we conducted analysis over the last, uh, several months, and before this group spend, before we spend too much more time with the outreach and all the work that we want to do to see if this goes anywhere, we want to make sure that the board, uh, thinks it's a good idea. And that's, and, um, so we have here, um, Director Cora York, Finance, uh, Superstar of, uh, Solutions, Ellie Anderson, and our Sustainability Director Andrea Becerra.
Good evening. Yep, so the, got the intros all set. Um, yeah, so what John was mentioning, we've been looking sort of preliminarily at curbside collection for the town, um, so we're just here to give kind of a quick update of that and ask for guidance for the next steps, so. We, what we're doing tonight is just to kind of...
Can you speak louder?
Oh, sure. Yeah. There we go. So, yeah, so we're just here tonight to kind of bring you up to speed to where we are as far as the analysis that we've done, and then, uh, next steps, and see what the board would like us to do. So as we get into the project here, is sort of how we got to where we are now, is, um, there's been conversations of curbside programs throughout, um, various studies, I know Acton twenty twenty, there was some discussions, some of those focus groups. Um, there is the Climate Action Plan that has brought it up, as well as, um, I'd say recently, we get a lot of calls from people who recently moved into town that have never heard of a transfer station, and they're asking when the trash truck comes to their neighborhood, so, um, we've, we've explained to them what a transfer station is, but we've also been receiving calls from residents who have private curbside. We've talked to a few probably in the last four months that, um, their program's gotten very costly and with increasing costs everywhere, they're looking at options out there to see what they could do to save some money, so, um, the, the curbside's been always a, a question, um, but we've, so we've been kind of focusing in on that with the DEP, kind of working through sort of the next steps of what it, what it might look like in town. So as we get, as most everyone knows, we have the transfer station, um, in behind the DPW garage for the access off Route Two. Uh, we can, with a sticker and using the pay as you throw bags, you can bring, um, your trash and recycling there. The crew that works there, they do a, a really good job at, um, keeping things moving along in orderly and helping the residents, but also finding new sort of, um, recycling streams to kind of get more material out of the waste stream to help reduce that, so. Um, I say in addition to the trash and the, sort of the mainstream recycling with the mixed paper and the plastic and glass, we have a lot of other, um, options out there that they do as far as diversion with the food waste. Um, the swap shop has been very successful with the volunteers down there, and then all the, the propane tanks, all the different things, so it's, it's been a, a very well-received program, it's worked really well. Um, and we're just looking at what options might be out there to help expand upon that. So as we look, been working with the DEP, um, they, they, they're looking across the whole state, so this graphic shows the data that they have for various communities that have pay as you throw or have curbside programs or a, or sort of a hybrid of both. So this is just showing, um, a lot of those communities that are out there that you'll see. Um, and so when we enacted pay as you throw, um, right back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, um, that we established program that pays throw bags, we, we did see a reduction in the trash, um, in there. Typical with the program when we enacted, some people were just opposed to the pay as you throw program that left, um, we had a, a small handful of people that left by virtue of, they were, um, sort of high-cost generators, they had a lot of trash, so they were concerned about that, so they went elsewhere, but for the most part, it, the numbers stayed pretty good. We had, um, we had a slight dip in the stickers when they, when it first happened, but over the course of the program, since then, we've seen increases in the recycling and the senior programs, things like that, so, um, and, and as a whole, we've seen an increase in the number of users that have come, as well as the material coming in, we, we've been seeing a, a general reduction from what was happening, sort of pre-pay as you throw. One of the benefits that we see, um, and questions that we've heard as far as the material coming in and the, the usage, um, the DEP was, does sort of analysis, well, is what they look at is, uh, annually per household, how much trash each household is generating. So in this slide, you'll see, um, we're sort of in the, Acton's in sort of the lower echelon of the, the pounds per household, so they're in that sort of thousand, thirteen-hundred pounds per year for residents, which has been relatively good. They did have some earlier graphics that just happened to be pre-pay as you throw, so you could see us sort of in the, sort of the higher pounds per household, and then as pay as you throw came, it dropped us down into that newer category, so, um, it's been a, it's been a good program, and we're just looking at ways that we can expand on that.
Um, so as John mentioned, um, in the Climate Action Plan, which was published last year, um, one of the strategies specifically calls for reducing waste and increasing the waste, um, diversion rate. Um, and one of the actions within that strategy is to conduct a waste audit in Acton to expand, um, pay as you throw to more individuals in Acton, including, um, multifamily. Um, so what the Mass DEP data showed is that when communities transfer or shift to pay as you throw, um, their waste reduces substantially, and we saw that in Acton where we reduced, um, our waste by nearly one, nearly a half. Um, so we had, uh, we were, um, for example, in twenty thirteen, um, in twenty fourteen, um, uh, there's about thirty-seven point five, um, tons of, of, um, household waste, and that was nearly halved at twenty-two, um, in twenty twenty-two. Um, so that gives you a sense of the impact of pay, of pay as you throw, so, um, the reason we're looking at, um, expanding the pay as you throw program through curbside is that the concept is that, um, curbside managed by the town would be substantially more affordable than, um, current private hollering systems. So, um, according to the Mass DEP, they see a lot of shifts to, um, the town-wide system, um, so we would see a lot more people, uh, potentially in the, participating in the pay as you throw program, um, because currently only, um, half of Acton uses the transfer station, um, so, so potentially we would see an increase in participation in the pay as you throw program. Um, so, um, some of the benefits of, um, reducing waste, I, I think, are, are very obvious to many people, but, um, some of them are, um, reducing our air pollution. Um, so when we incinerate, we, um, burn, um, uh, we emit particle, particulate matter pollution, and that affects local air quality. Um, and then, um, a reduction of waste also means a reduction in energy consumption associated with, um, manufacturing of new raw materials, um, because we, uh, increase the amount that we recycle by reducing the amount we waste. Um, and then, um, uh, directly related to our greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal, um, less incineration means, um, less greenhouse gas emissions. Um, we also pulled this interesting, um, we made this interesting calculation, um, that you can see here on this table, um, that's looking at vehicle miles traveled, so emissions from vehicle, vehicle miles traveled, and looking at three different scenarios. Um, by far, the greatest source of emissions from vehicle miles travel, um, is the private hauler system, um, because there are so many trucks, um, driving through town, um, emitting, and these trucks are typically not very, um, efficient, um, and then, um, you see the breakdown of, you know, if we had one hauler system, that would really mean just two trucks, one for trash, one for recycling, uh, traveling through town, and so that, and those emissions drop significantly. Um, that's of course assuming that everyone would join the town-managed system. Um, and then we also did a calculation of personal vehicle miles trial, uh, personal vehicle miles, um, traveled to the transfer station, um, taking an average of how far most people are from the transfer station. Um, so it's a lot of numbers, um, but, um, to give you a sense of how much, um, how many emissions come from our solid waste, um, it's about five thousand six hundred and seventeen metric tons of CO2, which is the equivalent of about a thousand two hundred and fifty gas-powered, um, vehicles. Um, another thing we'll be looking at, um, through this assessment is the electrification of, um, trash trucks as well, to see, um, how much further, uh, emissions could be reduced.
Okay, so if we're comparing our current trash offerings, we're looking at private curbside service as we've discussed, and then we're looking at the transfer station and recycling system, um, center. So from a cost perspective, we found that private curbside can cost a household between five hundred and fifty dollars and eight hundred dollars per year. That range, um, is the result of differences in services, the, um, cost of the trash that's being thrown away, the frequency that they're coming to your home, um, and then if you're utilizing the transfer station, your cost is coming from either your annual sticker, which is currently a hundred and five dollars if you're a non-senior customer, and coming from pay as you throw bags. Um, so if you use one bag per week, between the bags and the sticker, you're looking at about two hundred and thirty-eight dollars per year with additional costs if you have a couch to throw away, or, um, if you're cleaning out your home. So if we're looking at a financial approach to estimate what bringing, what the cost would be per user to bring curbside trash pickup, we're going to estimate what the total cost would be to administer the program. So that's disposal costs for solid waste, recycling processing, the collection of the recycled goods and the solid waste, um, potentially the cost of bags, and then to administer the program, and then we're going to subtract the revenue from the program, which could come from recycling, um, selling, like, an additional fee for bulky or yard waste, or if there are bags, revenue from bags. And then we're going to divide that by the total number of users. For the purpose of the very simple model that we used, we're looking at about nine thousand users to kind of keep that in line with the number of households that we have in town, or the number of taxable parcels. Another thing to note is that there would be, or could be additional startup costs if we're looking at utilizing carts as opposed to bags, there are also potential grant opportunities through Mass DEP that would be, or could be factored into this. So here we have a cost comparison now including the potential curbside service. So we have an estimated two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and twenty-five dollars per year cost per household or per user. Um, clearly, this is a bit more expensive than the current transfer station service, but also significantly less expensive than private curbside hauling service. So the reason why it's estimated and why there's such a wide range is because there are a number of things of, number of things to consider when we're thinking about what this program would look like, who it's serving, and exactly who it would, how it would operate. So these are just a selection of questions that we came across while completing this analysis, um, such as would multifamily properties be included? Are we going to offer, would we offer this service to commercial, commercial properties? How will it be funded? Um, what will the service offer? Um, so to answer these questions and to see if this is a service that, um, town residents are interested in or if they have concerns about, we kind of came up with this pers- perspective list of next steps, which starts with an engagement program with the public, um, which would be initiated through meetings with boards and committees. We've listed some of them here that we feel would be pertinent or would have, um, input or a good perspective to give. And then all of this would kind of lead up to the development of some sort of survey and then additional research into what this would actually look like, what it would cost, and so, so on and so forth. So kind of the last part is to get input from the select board and how you feel about everything that we've described and the very introductory or cursory analysis that we've started so far. Um, so we could either do that here, or we could move on to questions.
Um, I'd love to hear from board members who might have questions or reactions, um, starting from the far left.
I'm not usually associated with the far left.
I thought you might have gone.
So, um, you know, a couple of thoughts. I think as far as your outreach, uh, you had a good list of folks you wanted to speak with. I think, you know, having a, a full public forum, as well as dealing specifically with those boards and committees, I think, would be, uh, would be interesting. And, you know, might want to have that on a couple of occasions so that you can target particular audiences. I know seniors seem to love the transfer station, and being a senior, I will admit to that. Um, so, you know, if you want to get some input from them, you know, figure out a, a proper time. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that happen in transfer station which would not be easy to address on curbside. I'm thinking specifically about, uh, green waste situation, um, brush, that sort of stuff, especially after storms and hurricanes and spring cleanups. I know other towns have done things where they'll open their oil transfer station to accept waste of that material, but only for a couple of limited periods of time, and I think it could be... I think it could be quite a, a mess. Um, you know, I, I think having a lot of brush and, and woody material coming in there constantly is really a great service. And ob- obviously, the next step to that is the fact that it gets chipped up and all of that material is available to the public. Um, likewise with the, the leaves and grass clippings which end up getting, uh, converted into compost, again, available to the public. So I think there's some great services that you should not overlook. Um, and I don't see any practical way to address that with curbside. There's another area down at the transfer station that just accepts things like broken cement blocks and rocks and concrete and that sort of stuff, which gets chipped up, uh, ground up and used as road base. Um, you know, if you've got that kind of stuff at your house, you probably don't have to get rid of it very often, but when you do, it's tough to find a place to put that and you probably don't want to put that in the back of one of those little tully toders that you bring out to the sidewalk. So I, I think you're always going to need, um, some sort of an operation down there and you're going to have to staff it. The, uh, swap shop is very popular. Lots of people like it. Um, I will admit to having been very skeptical about pay-as-you-throw when it was first brought out, but I think it works out quite well. Um, it's a nice neat operation. I've actually gone down there with, with friends who don't live in a town that provides a sort of a comprehensive solution and they're really impressed, uh, with how well it's run. So I'd be very skeptical of, of going to curbside. I certainly want to hear the public input. One of the other things that I'd be concerned with is if you go out to bid, uh, for a private hauler to come in, you'll probably get a really good bid the first year and then second year, not so good. Um, once you've eliminated your transfer station and you're really over a barrel and you are stuck, you are at the mercy of a fairly small cadre of commercial haulers. And this might look like a great financial deal the first one or two years and they'll realize this is a really bad idea after the next contract gets negotiated. So I think I'd be very skeptical of that. The other thing that we've seen in other towns, um, situations, I believe Stowe was one of them, where they had, uh, commercial haulers taking care of all their trash, and then the commercial haulers were not able to perform. They didn't have enough drivers, they didn't have enough trucks, and they would go weeks without being able to do pickup of roadside trash. And there was no solution to it other than just piling it up in your garage. I, you know, one of the constant issues that I hear about from my neighbors is they're, they're using commercial haulers and the price is going up, yes, and the reliability is going down. So I think that it's be very dangerous for the town to get into this. Um, and instead of being, you know, four or five different waste hauling companies, so different degrees of viability, you're stuck with one. And when you're stuck with one, there's a monopoly and you have no options. So I want to hear the information, but I'll tell you right up front that I'm very skeptical of, uh, the whole idea of town-operated curbside, and I'm very concerned about the other sorts of benefits that you have with the existing operation. Thank you.
Alyssa, far right.
Thank you.
Oh, that's why it was confusing, okay.
Enough. Thank you all for this presentation. Um, I have to tell you, when I saw it in my packet, I was like, oh no, because I love the transfer station as well. Um, I am curious, uh, if you did any analysis besides the emissions from vehicles because, um, like Dean, I've heard from other residents in town who are unhappy with the service quality going down and the cost going up if they are private haulers, and I am constantly convincing people to just go to the transfer station because it's amazing. Um, and they also are pretty concerned that what they think they're recycling is not being recycled. So what I would be concerned about is if we went to a commercial municipal hauling syst- curbside pickup, are we going to, um, be less green because things aren't, we can recycle fewer things or we think they're being recycled but they're not, even if we are saving on emissions? So is that analysis part of this initiative?
Yeah, those are, those are really good points to bring up. Um, we haven't considered looking specifically at how effective the recycling system would be in curbside versus, um, transfer station, or like, we hadn't considered that, but we would definitely consider it, um, as part of the analysis. Um, and then in terms of other emissions, so the emissions I actually listed out earlier, um, that's actually from the whole solid waste sector in, in town, so that includes the private haulers and, um, the transfer station, and it's just emissions from incineration. Um, so, um, and it came from the greenhouse gas inventory that was conducted in 2019. Um, so no additional analysis besides the vehicle miles traveled was done at this stage.
There might be other, there might be other questions and comments. Yes, both Dave.
Uh, thank you. I have one kind of historical question and then, uh, some questions how this program would work. The historical question is when recycling went down, I'm sorry, when, um, uh, the solid waste, uh, amount of solid waste went down, we, when we converted to pay-as-you-throw, did recycling go up proportionally?
I have that number. I'm glad I printed out my spreadsheet. Um, so in fiscal 2016, which is when pay-as-you-throw was implemented, in total, um, municipal solid waste went down twenty-six percent, and I believe recycling went up twenty-eight percent.
So it's probably pretty close. That doesn't, not measuring tons, but it's pretty, probably pretty close. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so now I have, um, a, a, a bunch of questions on, on this program. Um, where would the, uh, curbside trucks go? Would we contract with someone and they would take it to an, an, you know, a, a landfill in another town, another part of the state, or an incinerator in another part of the state? And, um, or, or would we go to the same incinerator we've gone to now, or how would that work?
Yeah, our current contract right now expires in, um, a year, so is, is, if we proceed with this and continue on, um, we'd probably be factoring that in if we looked into a program, um, what that hauler does, we can kind of specify in the bids, sort of what we're looking for. So it would be a hauler taking it somewhere. Um, and, uh, like Dean had mentioned with the transfer station, um, if in the, if we proceeded in the analysis was to keep some kind of a hybrid option, we'd have to kind of explore those options of what things we would be doing at the, um, transfer station, what things we'd no longer be doing, um, of, kind of factoring all that in, because like, like you had mentioned, they do quite a bit there, so the, we, I, I don't, I'm not sure if we could offer all that in a curbside program, where we offer a lot of the, um, a lot of those amenities there, so, um, there are a lot of those questions that we'd kind of have to work through and then as we get to, um, what we think Acton would want for a program and then sort of put that into that bid to see what responses we would get back, so.
Right, uh, I, I think, um, that a hybrid program of some kind would be good. I mean, you know, Dean mentioned things like concrete blocks or brush or things like that. There are also sometimes you have a large piece of metal or, um, uh, you have a refrigeration unit, like a dehumidifier, and you, you want to make sure that that's put in the right place and not just, I mean, even if it fits, you could put, probably fit a dehumidifier in your barrel, but that's not appropriate really. Um, so, um, uh, anyway, uh, so I think, I think some kind of hybrid program would be good. Um, do we have an assessment? You know, I think one of the things that is a, is a really good thing about our, the transfer station now is this, and this falls on with one of Alyssa's question, is that our recycling program is really good. Um, do we think that single stream recycling would be as high a quality as our recycling program? I mean, you, we, at the transfer station, we divide up more things, whereas in single stream recycling, they divide up more things, right, whoever they is. Um, and so, um, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm just wondering, we'd probably have to make a judgment, I guess, as to how good the recycling program was?
Yeah, I've, I mean, I've heard both sides of the coin when you talk about single stream. It, it simplifies the recycling process of the, the intent is make it simpler, you'll get more in return. Um, I've heard, I think, years ago when we would do, well, we still do dual stream, but we were taking shredded, um, paper, where in the single stream, um, I was told they couldn't take it because it gets blended in, so it's, it's no longer an acceptable item. Uh, so there's a lot of those things that are, um, you'd have to kind of work through, but it's also the way they're bringing the material, how they sort it. It depends, um, like some of those, um, MRFs that they sort the material and they're dumping it on the floor, so it depends on how sophisticated they are and where they put the materials and how they sort it, so. It's a lot of factors like that that would have to be worked through. Um, and I know I've attended different regional recycling meetings and listened to some curbside communities that have, um, they do periodic enforcement, so they'll, you, I've heard communities that have individuals that will follow the trucks and they'll watch what's being dumped in the truck, so they do sort of a periodic audit, and if they see issues, they'll, they'll tag those as well, as I think the drivers will tag those as well. Um, so they, sometimes I've seen drivers that will put, if they see something in the recycling that shouldn't be there, they'll put a sticker on the, the barrel to kind of give someone a heads up, um, that they put something wrong in there, just to kind of educate as they go, so. I've seen different mechanisms in place to try to deal with that issue and work, work with it, so.
Okay, um, I just have two, two more things. Uh, one is just a comment. I think if, um, we go to curbside, I think we still need some kind of cart or even if it's customer-supplied cart, uh, because I think, uh, open bags and wildlife just ask for plastics to be distributed in the environment. Um, and, um, uh, f- finally, and I think this is the, uh, million-dollar or multimillion-dollar question, would we not need to replace the transfer station building if we did this?
Yeah, I guess depending on this process, what the outcome is, um, I think when we started the DPW building committee and looking at that, we kind of tabled the transfer station side to sort of hatch out some of these questions, so depending on the outcome of this would sort of dictate the next steps of what do we do down there as far as, we had, we were working on some operational changes to the, to the way you flows through and thoughts of the buildings or layout, but we wanted to put that on hold to kind of see, because this, depending on how this unfolds could drastically change our thought process of how we think, assuming that the transfer station stays in operation, that what we're really doing down there and how we think we need to re, sort of relay that out to sort of help improve flow and through there, so.
Right? It, it seems to me, and it just, I just need a general agreement or, or any comments you might have, um, uh, that if we had some kind of hybrid operation, we would need the recycling and, uh, odd materials areas and all that kind of thing, but probably not the building, it seems to me, right? Uh, you know, maybe we need certain things that something we would need to replace the building, but, um, or we need a much smaller building, yeah.
Yeah, it's possible that building could be repurposed for something besides, if, if we went to curbside for trash, we could possibly use it as a shelter for, um, materials that we're using now, so it's something that could be considered, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing. I love the transfer station. And you'd be taking away one of my social activities several times a week. I know that sounds kind of pathetic, but, um, would this, you would contract out for equipment? We wouldn't actually be getting a fleet of trucks or, or something like that?
It seemed like in the conversations we've had with the DEP and other communities, we've just talked to a couple and looked, um, seems, the tendency now seems to be outsourcing to a contract rather than trying to bring in more staff, buying the equipment ourselves, so, um, that seems to be the trend that we've been hearing, but we haven't done a lot of research in other communities and then.
Um, so, thank you. I think this was a great presentation of what, what we've been working on, and I think the reason that I asked them to come here first is that if the board doesn't want us to do all this work, we'll stop now. Um, and, and that's fine, uh, we're okay with that, but we just wanted to, um, understand if this is something that you want to see the end of the road on or not, because if you don't, then we certainly have plenty of other things that you'll be assigning to us in a few weeks that we'll be working on, so I just wanted to make sure that we got this out in front of you now before we spent the summer or however long working on it.
Thanks, uh, oh, go ahead.
Has this, did this come from a lot of, uh, town folks asking for curbside? Is, is my question.
Uh, not necessarily asking for curbside. Um, I think as, as Corey mentioned, when people move here, a lot of times they don't understand that we don't have curbside and that, that's an easy conversation, that, then they know. But I think just generally the Climate Action Plan, w- we were charged with trying to implement things that are in there, and this is one of the things that we had a grant through Mass DEP to provide technical assistance, which allowed us to do it with expertise from Mass DEP, and this product is the end of that work. And before we move forward, we just wanted to make sure that this was something that there was interest in, um, from the board.
Um, I can see there's an appetite for public opinion. I'm going to make my comments first and then I have public opinion, public input. Um, keeping in mind that this isn't the general trash forum that, that we've asked them to have, but it would be good to get preliminary thoughts. Um, so what I'm hearing from my fellow select board members, and I also feel it myself, is that, um, A, this, this process should continue, uh, you know, like this, there's a lot of interesting research that's important to get done that might result in, you know, both environmental and, and cost savings that's really worth looking into. Um, but on the other hand, uh, I think that analysis is going to need to take a look at a, a hybrid system. Uh, I think we're going to have to assume that the, uh, the public outcry and the loss of the environmental benefits of the variety of recycling are going to mean that there needs to be some kind of transfer station. So my assumption is that if we remove tra- trash from there, that's going to remove a lot of cost, because it's fewer people, it's less equipment, you don't have the, you know, the big thing pushing around the trash o- 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 all day. Um, so i- it might be that there would be enough savings in costs by just having a recycling only, you know, and the fabulous drop and swap area, the swap shop could, I mean, the swap shop could grow so much. It could take over that whole transfer station building, for example. Um, so that's, that's the two parts I'm hearing from people is, um, uh, yes, please keep doing this amazing research, uh, you know, reach out to, you know, public forums and all these committees. I would add the Human Services Committee, uh, to your list there and I would, uh, I would spell, um, um, no, I, you're, you're all fine there, it's a good list. Um, the, um, yeah, but let's, let's figure out how to keep that transfer station open, otherwise this is just going to die on the vine, which is what happened last time we looked at, um, potentially going to, uh, curbside, uh, is that the notion of, that the, the bidders, uh, all said, "I'm willing to take on the process of picking up trash from Acton as long as you close the transfer station." Um, so, you know, you're going to have to deal with that, so it's going to be, have to be some research about who, you know, who, who might be willing to bid on this in this kind of hybrid situation. And they might, they might be willing to, um, but that's something to look out for. Uh, a couple of, do I have any other small things to cover? Um, if, if we're looking at a hybrid option and the transfer station becomes a, you know, amazing, even more amazing recycling place, um, it is possible that you might, this might be worth looking at, that you don't have to, uh, pick up recycling. It's possible, because of the disadvantages of single stream, um, it's possible that if this was a trash and a compost pickup, that that would be, that would take care of the main things that people have to deal with every week. A, a lot of recycling, uh, is not smelly. A lot of recycling can accumulate a little bit and then people can get it to the transfer station. Um, so that's an option to look at. Um, I love that you're looking at electric trucks, um, you know, I- I love that you're looking at electric trucks, you know, I, I kind of have this, I have this theory that there's no local vendor that has an electric truck, but, you know, if, if the, if the contract is, you know, not too long and we can reoffer it with a, you know, a wonderful, you know, booster for someone providing an electric truck, we, we might be able to, you know, get someone to do that, and that would be awesome. That was all my thoughts. So a little bit of public input, especially on the question of whether this is worth studying.
Hi, I'm Madeline, Sashan Way. I appreciate your presentation, but as a renter in Acton, and because of the warrant article that I had on composting, I, I worry about certain things, because this, you know, presentation seems a little technical, and I would like more of a public forum to get feedback, not just from homeowners, you know, property owners, renters themselves. Whether it be through curbside or private haulers, tenants need recycling now. Tenants want recycling, they want to reduce carbon footprint. Whether we implement curbside or focus on the health department, ensuring and ruling that building complexes must offer recycling, it is such a loss to the town that so much waste is going on at apartment complexes, buildings now, when tenant wants to contribute to Acton being a more suitable, sustainable town. And I'd rather our focus for now, while you do your study, be shifted towards that, because it's a real issue. And I don't know how often you guys drive around through these complexes, but it's a hot mess, and that needs attention ASAP. And I know that we've brought it up before, and it seems to be taking longer than expected, and we need a solution now, and I'd rather the focus be put on that. Thanks.
Hello, Leo Fatchman, Wright Terrace. I got two minutes, right? Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for mentioning, please add the Human Services Committee. And to make it easier for you, we ask for, we have presentations people are giving us on the second Thursday of the month, and we can try and advertise that to get the public there, too. It'd be a great way to discuss this. So please let me know, and we'll find a way to fit you in on a second Thursday of the month. Thank you.
Here again, yes, I agree with Madeline, because that would be like cherry picking. To get recycling for a third of the town, I'd be willing to subsidize that. I have a question and then some comments. The analysis, the couches, is that measured because they're already delivering couches? Are you talking about an increase in the couches and the odd things in the analysis? I don't need an answer now, but just, that'll be a question later. I would love for the building to be a community center, and we can still go to the dump and get signatures. I am concerned about privatization of government services. And then another question, can we still use a private hauler if we want to, or has it become mandated? That's the question. And I love the idea of stickers to remind people I don't want an audit, and I don't want my name in my database about what I am or am not throwing away. I personally don't have a lot of trash, my private hauler service is very cheap, and we avoid having extra visits down the dead end street by putting a cone out, and then they drive by if they don't see the cone. They have one truck. They, I think the focus should be on educating people about how to use less. I can't tell you how many environmental groups, I go to their events, they have plastic single-use water bottles, plates and forks, and they say, oh, it was just this time because we were busy until the next meeting. I feel like there are more important goals than studying how to reduce the cost for individual property owners when they just stop using so much, in my opinion, and focus on the renters and land use clearing think limits. Thank you.
Have to keep it pressed? Okay. Hi, I am so excited. Honestly, I had to control myself, I had to tell my neighbor to please restrain me.
When, since you, since, there's this whole ritual where you say your name and like what part of town you're from first, so we can know who you are.
Yes, my name is Deepika and I live in West Acton.
Thanks so much, Deepika.
I loved your presentation, and I'm a big fan of accountability. So the principle behind pay as you throw is about accountability. So climate change environment is bigger than you and me, or making friends at different locations. I think the fact that we are holding ourselves accountable for the trash we're producing is bigger than everything else. So for me, this concept is very exciting. I agree with what Madeline said about recycling needs to happen now, that needs to have composting, recycling, that needs to be our focus, but we also need to focus on accountability. If we are producing trash, we need to hold ourselves accountable. So that concept is very exciting. Is this presentation, I'm a little slow, is this available for us to see later? Okay, that's great. So then I can forward it to all my friends, and we can talk about it and get excited. Secondly, to your concerns about, I don't know who had that concern about privatization and people, private companies not holding up to their promises, just like you mentioned about the True West license, it having, we can look at it again next year, this is the same thing, we can look at a different company next year if we do give, end up giving contract to one. So we can definitely, but in either case, it probably sends my excitement. This is something I would love to see us pursue, and it's not a decision which needs to be made in haste, but I'd love to keep having this conversation about pay as you throw program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Okay. So last round of comments from the select board, I'm especially interested in whether you think I accurately summarized the sense of the board about, let's keep studying this, let's do the outreach, let's assume that we're probably going to need to figure out some way of keeping the transfer station open. But, but any additional thoughts would also be welcome. Alyssa?
So I'm not sure that that's what I was saying, that we should continue studying this. I wasn't aware that we had an exploration in the past of curbside. Can you tell me when that was, how many years ago?
Sure. This would have been about 20 years ago, I want to say, when the Nezwick contract expired, when we were, we were briefly in a period where we had a mandatory amount of trash that we had to collect every week or get penalized, sort of like a stupid anti-environmental system that we had for a little while. And part of the exploration of the future of that was, well, let's consider curbside. And, and at that, at that point, all the bids that came in were, sure, I can do that as long as you close down the transfer station. But that was a long time ago.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm not sure that I'm saying that we should definitely pursue this. You know, people move to Acton from places that are more urban, and they want to know what to do about their septic system. Why don't you have sewer? Or they want to know what to do about the woodchucks in their backyards. So I feel like this is an environment that we can have some expectations of people adjusting to the town environment as it is. And so if that's the, if that's the impetus for this, and there is a lot of possibility for losing a lot of the recycling amenities that we have at the transfer station, if what you're saying, that there are limited haulers that would, that would bid on a, on a hybrid program, and most of them want to only have that contract if we close the transfer station, I'm, I'm not sure that this is worth pursuing. And I just want to respond to Deepika to say that pay as you throw already exists. So it doesn't exist for the curbside pickups that half of the town has, but it does exist already at the transfer station. But then again, only half of the folks in town use the transfer station. I'd rather see more of the town use the transfer station than go to curbside recycling, curbside pickup, sorry, unless, you know, there's, you know, significant carbon emission reductions because you only have a couple of trucks going through town instead of thousand.
Yeah, so again, the, the bottom line key to me is, if we keep the transfer station open for trash, we are going to have to significantly upgrade that building. The roof is falling down, and so if we just, and I, so I, I'm wondering actually whether we might want to vote on this tonight, at least, you know, with a, to give the, the manager guidance, but I, I'll, I'll just leave that. But to me, that's the key trade-off, right? If we go forward with this, my expectation is, we're not doing a $20 million, $15 million, $10 million upgrade to that building, right? Conversely, if we are beginning to look at a, the upgrade to that building, because the roof is falling down and everything is going to cost some millions of dollars, whatever millions that is, that's balanced against the cost of this program, right? And so in my mind, keeping the transfer station open, open for recycling and unusual materials and no trash makes sense, but maybe that's not the, the sense for the, the, the whole board. It's something, Jim, that you were alluding to, or maybe even pointing out, I mean, you could have curbside trash pickup, maybe the curbside recycling is optional, and if you choose not to take the curbside recycling, you get a free recycling sticker for the, for the transfer station, or, or something. And maybe other people could get free recycling stickers, like the, the people who lives in, live in apartments and things like that, if they want to do the, the, the high quality recycling. So if we're, we have a, we'd have to figure out the financials of everything, obviously, maybe, maybe the, the trash pickup can subsidize, you know, a staff person at the transfer station for recycling, you know? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't share the cost of that, but I think it's, my, my feeling is it's worth that, but I think the worst of all possible outcomes for townsfolk is to continue forward with this study and then say we need an upgrade to that building, which is going to cost some millions of dollars.
I think the building is going to need an upgrade anyway, because the roof is still falling, that, it might not be as big of a project as, as projected, but it still needs safety issues and.
I don't, I don't want the dome to go away.
So Jim mentioned about that we got suckered into this Nezwick contract years ago, and this is ancient history, because this is going to solve all of our problems, all the trash is going to go up there, it's all taken care of. And it was this huge financial boondoggle, and who was it that put a gun to our head? Folks from DEP. And when the whole thing fell apart, they backed off and they said, oh, it's not our problem. So I'm just a bit skeptical of these pronouncements that come from under the golden dome, that you got to do it because, you know, this is the best thing to do, because we've been burned before, you know? I've seen how that movie ends. Secondly, the, the existing building that was built, I mean, it's really large, and it was really large because it was designed when there was no pay as you throw, and frankly, very little recycling even considered, everything went in there. And there was a thought of making it big enough so that, and this was actually the situation for a while, when we had to come up with enough trash to satisfy the state mandated Nezwick program that we're in, we're taking commercial trash in there and piling it and basically doing a trash brokerage program. So we needed that really big building. Certainly the building needs to be upgraded or replaced, but I suspect that if we stick with the same, you know, the trash goes in that building and recycling goes other places, I don't think we're going to need as big a building or as high a building. There's even been some consideration, other towns, they just have outside compactors that just throw the barrel, the, the bags into. So I, I don't think you're necessarily going to need to have that level of, of infrastructure in the future. My own feeling is that, that you three folks here have a whole lot on your plate, and I know the town manager does, too, and I'm not sure that this is the best use of your time. So I would, I'm, I'm always interested to hear ideas, but I suspect that this is going to be a huge undertaking on the part of town staff, and I suspect that there are other things that are probably going to pay off better benefits than what this will do. You'll spend a year spinning your wheels on this, and probably it's going to be so unpopular, it's not going to pass anyway. So that's my own, my own feelings. Jim put a slightly rosier glow on the whole thing than I have. Thank you.
So I do think some kind of vote is going to be important here, since you have heard from some people who think, you know, oh, don't, don't proceed, and other people who said, oh, yes, let's proceed. So let's find if, let's find if we can craft a motion that, you know, three or four of us are in favor of, to, let's see, something like, please continue the study, please assume that the recycling aspect of the, of the transfer station will need to continue. Is that a motion that anyone would be willing to make or second? Oh, John, John has a thought first before we start.
Thank you. The ask on the agenda is that the board consider approving the plan to conduct public outreach. So basically that slide, if we're asking, before we do all this, do you approve this plan? Not, not the plan to do something about trash recycling, but the plan that's shown right here. And if you don't, that's fine, but we just wanted to know either way.
Well, let's start with that one, that might be an easier one. Shall, do we, do we want to recommend that the, that the staff continue with a, you know, public engagement process to meet with committees and the public to discuss these ideas?
I, I would like to make that motion. I'll just say it's, you know, because we're, we're conflicted, maybe the, we'll, we'll find out from a public outreach program what, what the feelings of the town are.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded to proceed with a public outreach. Any last comments before we vote on that? No, okay. All those in favor of proceeding with this public engagement process, please say yes or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? No, you have unanimous support from the select board to go out and engage with the public. I think we're going to leave it at there, given that it's after nine o'clock. I'm not going to try to sort through the, you know, what, what's the transfer station look like and all that, that's, that's down the road. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Oh, here's another good one. I'm sorry, don't mean to call agenda items good or bad, but it's nice to have a good one next. Accept public input in advance of select board goal-setting workshop. So let me say a couple of words about this before people line up and say things. Goals by the select board are both long-term and short-term, so you may have an opinion about whether the goals you're suggesting are short or long, but times we decide that late in the process anyway, so just lay out your goals, that's fine. Goals tend to be sent, sentences, not paragraphs, and fewer words the better. You might have a lot of backing material to explain the details of your proposed goal. What I recommend is that you emails those to us so we can study them and learn from them. I'm going to let the comments still, you know, run more than the two minutes, let's give you guys three minutes, I don't see a huge crowd here. But keep it brief and we'll listen intently. So I'm happy to start accepting public inputs. Looks like people are lining up in front of the microphone. Go for it.
Leo Fatchman, Wright Terrace. I want to start by making it clear that I'm speaking as a resident, not as a member of a board or the committees that I'm a member of. I'd like to ask that when setting goals, you consider the financial implications. If possible, please ask the finance committee for their analysis of the financial impact on our taxpayers, not just whether they approve, disapprove, or have no opinion. And if their committee stated opinion is not unanimous, what is the opposing opinion? You've heard this before, but I'm going to repeat it again. A select board member, now our chair, recently mentioned, we're entering a period financially in the town of Acton where things are going to get a little squeezed. We've enjoyed We've enjoyed the benefit of a lot of ARPA funds for the last few years, and that's going to continue for the next couple of years. But when that goes away, we're going to be entering the squeeze that we enter every decade or so, where we're only allowed to raise the taxes, or levy two and a half percent a year. So we're going to be entering a period of hard choices and eventually we'll be having a conversation about an operating override. I want to acknowledge the current use of ARPA funds have really helped the people in this town. It's been very good. When ARPA funds are depleted, will programs that have been using those be canceled or cut back, like the emergency assistance program, which uses ARPA funds? I'm thinking of a quote from Ronald Reagan, President Ronald Reagan. The closest thing to eternal life on earth is a government program. When needed, this town steps up and approves additional funds that are raised through debt exclusion, such as the twin schools and North Acton Fire Station. Our taxes have been increasing substantially. Please do what is in your power to lower the probability of a future operational override.
Select Board, Mr. Town Manager, I'm David Manilin, and I'm a member of the Kelly, Kelly's Corner Study Committee, but speaking as an individual to you tonight. I have four proposed goals, so I might be a little over my three minutes. The first is to work and provide better representation of citizens' opinion for voting at town meeting by allowing early balloting, similar to other elections in the Commonwealth, or alternatively, online voting as well as in-person voting. Either of these options for open town meeting would require legislative changes. I understand that. In the interim, there are other things I think you could do, because currently 333 out of 16,000 voters make all the decisions on night one of your town meeting that you just had. And that is too small. That's three and a half percent of the voters. That's not representation. That's inhibition. The number two issue that I would like to see is the town's master plan update in 2025 to focus on the entire number of constraints that we're looking at down the road. We know that we're going to move to electricity. We don't have a plan for where the charging stations go. There's no plan in place to put in distribution to handle the extra amperage, even if we're able to obtain it. Estimates say that we're going to have to by 2035 in this country, double the distribution capability of our country. That's a pretty short timeframe, given what permitting does. This town needs to incorporate current constraints on water, on land, on septic and other disposal, and on electric power in the master plan. The number three item that I have is related somewhat to the environment. Ban two-cycle engines for lawn care by some fixed date in the future. California has done this. Why? Because they found that the off-road equipment motors, i.e. the two-cycle motors for weed whackers and blowers, actually produce more pollution in California than all of the automobiles. So if we're going to be green, let's take some low-hanging fruit here as we move along. Let's ban by some date in the future, the use of two-cycle equipment on lawns, because that's repetitive use. And finally, I think all public meetings, including this one, should show live captions. We don't do it. We make people who are hearing impaired and people who don't speak English as a native tongue and depend on reading, we disenfranchise them. They can't participate in this debate, and it isn't hard. My phone's doing it right now. Microsoft Teams does it. Skype does it. Google Meet does it. Zoom can do it if you pay a little extra. And so we need to do that in real time. Oh, transcription after the fact in YouTube doesn't do anyone any good when you're talking about a town meeting or this board meeting, where you're watching on TV and you can't understand the sound system, or you don't understand English well enough to understand what's being said. So I thank you for your attention. I hope I didn't go over your three minutes.
But I'm here speaking as a co-president of Green Acton on behalf of the Board of Directors. We sent you a document, was that this morning? Who remembers? Outlining a couple of goals that we want to urge the board to consider adopting. I'm going to say the really short versions here and the other, you know, appendices stuff you guys already have. So first one, Green Acton urges the select board to make one of its annual goals, the adoption of formal methods. Oh, that's number two. I'll do them in the reverse order. Adoption of formal methods to limit land and tree clearing for new construction. The community's wish to protect land and trees was codified in the 2020 master plan, in the Acton Climate Emergency Declaration, and in the 2022 Town Meeting Warren Article, which was a non-binding citizen petition directing the select board to bring land and tree clearing limits bylaws to town meeting for town meeting to vote on. Thus, we urge the select board to establish such limits among its goals for the coming year and to consider creation of a bylaw to achieve such protection. And in reverse order, number one, we've called understanding PFAS pathways and reducing exposure risks. Green Acton urges the select board, excuse me, to make one of its annual goals, a program of actions to understand better and then minimize Acton residents' exposures to PFAS compounds. We urge the comprehensive address of PFAS, um, in the community because residents are exposed to these forever chemicals through multiple pathways, including via consumer products, industrial uses, and drinking water, among others. We ask that the select board launch a program to understand and reduce residents' exposures to these toxic compounds. And again, there's more information in the appendix that we submitted. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. Danny Factor, 11 Davis Road. But I'm actually speaking tonight as a community organizer with Housing Climate Justice for Acton. I've been asked to speak to you in regard to a recommended town, uh, goal for the coming year. Housing and Climate Justice for Acton, HCGA, uh, is a nonprofit organization consisting of apartment dwellers in Acton, who, consistent with our goal of housing justice, urged the town to create a town goal of increased tenant services for the coming year. Over the more than two years since our founding, HCGA has shed light on the needs of tenants in Acton, who are often vulnerable and underrepresented. We are pleased with some of the steps that the town has taken to recognize, uh, more of the needs of tenants in Acton. That said, many tenants in Acton still live in intolerable circumstances due to harassment by corporate landlords, unlawful eviction attempts, unlawful health conditions, and discrimination. To continue the town's work to create the level playing field that tenants in Acton deserve, we urge the select board to have one of its major town goals this year to be a goal of increased tenant services. Enactment of this goal would create a charge for the town to complete its desired work to help tenants, especially in the area of legal advocacy, which has been identified by the town as an area in which the town currently provides little or no services. Other areas in which an increased tenant services goal would be helpful would be in addressing matters identified in tenant-oriented citizens' petitions that have already been passed at town meeting, from the wishes of town meeting to have EV chargers, uh, in apartment, uh, building complexes, to working with the Acton Health Department in the area of enforcing tenant rights. Tenants are a sizable portion of Acton's population. If we are to be truly an inclusive town, tenants deserve to have at least one, one major goal that addresses their needs and speaks to their human dignity in the coming year. Thank you for the work that you've already done. I want to particularly compliment, uh, John for meeting with us this year, um, and thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thanks.
Tara again. I urge you to, I don't know what the limit is, but the prior times has been 10. 10 gets used up really quickly, and I hope that you opt to have groups of items that are very similar, that within those, you know, that one goal could have a group of things like tenant services and advocate, the recycling compost, to, 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 that could be like a project to get that done. Uh, land clearing, of course, that's near and dear to my heart. I love the idea of asking the FinCom what they think, um, and I think it's unfortunate that the room where you're developing the goals has little or no input from the FinCom, uh, because, and I also advocate that the FinCom not, and this is not directly to you guys, but not just, it's just not about taxes. It's about, you know, we talked about the, uh, the trash and the out-of-pocket expenses, you know, the value of saving land is, is not just about taxes. ARPA, the, the money, don't spend, don't spend that money on just creating more development that's not going to pay for itself, that's not going to, it's just going to bring more problems. So many of the problems that we have are because of unsustainable growth. I loved the idea of the master plan focusing on limits and figuring out how to use our resources that we have left fairly. If you just keep letting single-family homes be built everywhere, when you get to the end, you're not going to have any land left to actually have environmental justice. And then, uh, let's see, did I get all of my things in? I can't believe it. I might have. So, um, thank you very much for listening to me. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Madeline Cruz, St. John Way. I just want to emphasize and echo what each and every single speaker said tonight as a renter. I don't want you to forget about us and your goal settings. I'm begging you to please think twice when you set your goals on how might one goal can affect us. And listen to the people that spoke briefly, because everything that each and one of them said is very important. Thank you.
Thanks. Couple, a couple more folks here and then we'll hear from the folks online.
Thanks. Real simple one. Communicate with all your boards. I have spent over 50 years on one town board. I don't remember the last time a selectman, uh, any board, sent us any sort of message for information. Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. Teresa Ackery, 80 Parker Street, Acton. I am here to ask you to highly consider the renters' advocate for the town of Acton. I've been a renter in Acton for six years now, and there have been situations that I feel like I've needed help, but I didn't know where to turn. And I'm thinking that the renters' advocate would really help. Um, not just for, for me, but for other of my friends that have moved into town recently. I think that would be an excellent idea. And to use the last $100,000 that you have for the, um, great.
The rental assistance?
Yes, for the rental assistance. Thank you.
Before we hear from people a second time, I want to make sure we hear from the people online. Thanks. Uh, Mac, uh, there's still folks with, uh, online who would like to say something? Yes, at least two participants have raised their hand.
Of course, Mr. Chair. Michael Schultz, I'm sorry if I said that wrong, you should be able to speak.
Hi, this is Michael Schultz. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I'm at 24 Bruce Wood Road. I'd just like to urge the select board to adopt as one of its goals to regulate lithium battery energy storage system facilities, ESS facilities. We regulate every technology in this town. We regulate the use of bicycles. We regulate solar panels, solar panel arrays, solar panel farms. But there is no mention whatsoever in any town regulation about ESS boxes, which strikes me and my neighbors as very strange, because, uh, these things can be, as we've proven, beyond a shadow of a doubt, they can be very dangerous, uh, especially as time goes by. They can explode, they can set tree fires, they can spread clouds of poisonous hydrogen fluoride gas. And it just seems like this is a big omission on the town's part. I, I just think it's slipped through us, to be honest. The technology itself is only six years old. It only got introduced into, uh, Acton, uh, five years ago, and nobody knew anything about it. And, you know, I don't blame them, that's fine, you know, it's, oh, it's solar, it must be great, let's not learn about it. But the more we have learned about it, the more we've learned that, um, these things are probably a good idea, but they got to be located correctly, at least until they get safer. Because they're new, they're immature, and they are liable to, uh, poison our environment and injure or kill residents. So please adopt that as a goal. It would be a simple matter of, uh, putting an amendment in the Acton zoning bylaw. This amendment would not violate the Massachusetts Solar Statute for two reasons. One, ESS boxes are not solar devices. There's nothing photovoltaic, photovoltaic about them. But more importantly, even if you think they are, they still, as we have proven beyond a shadow of a doubt, again, they do pose a threat to quote-unquote "public health, safety, or welfare." And as long as they do that, then we are safe in properly zoning for ESS boxes. So I hope you will, uh, do that, uh, now and soon, uh, because, uh, somebody could get hurt or killed down the line, or our ground and groundwater could get poisoned. So please, uh, please make that a, you know, a logical, a common sense step. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, is there someone else online?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Judith, you should be able to speak.
Great, thank you. Judith Ernstein, Gregory Lane in Acton. I'm part of Mothers Out Front, and I would like the select board to consider something that they may already be doing, um, so I'm not 100% sure that this is anything new, but that the liaisons, the different committees, keep the climate action plan as, in our greenhouse gas reduction goals, as a very, uh, clear goal in when they're dealing with committees. And in particular, I'm thinking about the school committee, and they have this vast body of work. One of the things that they are doing, um, or is part of their purview is to, uh, have the school buses. And currently, the school buses and the diesel that they emit is a huge, um, factor. Uh, 95% of the buses in Massachusetts anyways are diesel, and it's a known contributor to children's health as well as environmental pollution. So I'm asking that, particularly for the liaison to the school committee, to keep that in mind, because I don't know that that's on their radar. So, thank you.
Thank you. Were there people that want, additional people in the audience?
Hello, Lila Ramachandran, Arborwood Road. Um, I am just speaking as myself. Um, a couple things, I think the comments earlier, but also just repeated instances throughout years. years, have suggested that there's an increased need for a variety of initiatives specifically around belonging. It's often called DEI, whatever you want to call it, making sure that all folks, regardless of their identities or protected classes, actually feel like they belong in this town. And maybe that includes providing additional support to the new DEI director who's been doing some pretty, pretty great work. Additionally, it would be great if we could update the town website. It's really hard to navigate, even for people who know exactly what they're looking for and where to look for it. And I know we're kind of doing the best with what we've got right now, but if we could redo some of that, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
And to finish it off, a couple of comments from people that have already commented. Go for it.
Yeah, on this one, Leo Fatchman, Wright Terrace. From the last commenter, I just want to say, as part of the Human Resources Committee, what we're doing right now is Phase One, documenting services in town, to try and make it easier for people to find information. So hopefully, we've been working on that. Fran knows we've been working on it. So hopefully, we get that out, and then we'll take comments too, to make it easier. There's a great one, it's Find Help. There is the website, I've been looking at it. They have tools, they have videos on how to set it up. So when you get in there, you can put in the zip code. You can put in, you're looking for seniors. You can change the language. It has a lot of important things. So it's just something that's on the horizon that will be coming. Thank you.
Yes. I wanted to add about the advocate, renters' advocate, to include small landlords. I have no sympathy for huge corporate landlords, but I do have sympathy for good landlords that are local, that are trying really hard. And the more rental subsidies, for sure, I would support that. I'm nervous about making a whole goal just to list more services, when really, when it gets down to it, after you've done all the research, and people who know how to find all this stuff, really gets down to that there's no money available for the people that need a rental subsidy or some food, and so. And then the last thing, I'd really want to support what he said about town meeting. And it's my understanding through some discussions that the select board set the warrant, and the select board could decide that it's three, it's three nights, and that's it, and this is what's going on these nights. That when the select board doesn't, then it allows the moderator to decide when and all this kind of stuff. And from what I understand, moderators are always concerned about whether they should bleed it over into another day because of the costs. But if the select board just decided it's gonna be these nights for these items, I think it would alleviate a lot of people's problems, and it wouldn't cost very much. Thank you so much. The pain and agony that I witnessed of people trying to stay up till midnight for voting. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. I wanted to also acknowledge that we got a number of letters with goals too, so we've gotten a lot of public input. Really appreciate it. As we said before, at our next meeting, we are going to consider the town meeting warrants and how that went, and sort of to have a preliminary discussion about those, because that might inform some of our goals. And then on the 12th, we'll actually have our goal-setting session. Thanks. Oh, there's all, some last comments from the board. Go for it.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know, as Jim mentioned, we have received emails. Our goal-setting meeting is not until June 12th, so you have three more weeks to submit emails. If you're listening and you didn't have a chance to speak tonight, please email us. I also wanted to mention that Mr. Mandurati turned on the closed captioning, which is available on Zoom. So if you're watching on YouTube and you're struggling to understand what you're hearing, switch over to Zoom, and you can use that closed captioning. And I also wanted to mention that boards and committees are also welcome to send in suggestions for select board goals via an email. If you're meeting in the next three weeks, and you can add that to your agenda. So it's a great idea to get FinCom input, and I think that the suggestion was FinCom input into the goals that we decide, you know, individual goals being commented on, but if there are general comments that the Finance Committee or other boards and committees want to send in, I would be really happy to hear those, and I'm sure the other board members would as well.
Thanks. Onto the next agenda item. Approve amended land stewardship committee mission statement. For those of you with long memories, you may remember we discussed this, ooh, a year ago, but we never brought back the final version, so I apologize for that. But now there is a final version, which is in your packet. It has three kinds of changes. One, it makes the, just the mechanical change from selectman to select board. It adds, it adds information about terms for associates, where the initial term would be one year, but, but future terms could be three years. And finally, that associates can be from out of Acton if, with both land stewardship committee and select board approval. This was a, this was, this came up because there is a land, there's a person who's, who's very happy to be a land steward, who lives just over the line, right near one of our conservation lands, and it'd be great to get him on board. And the notion that these would just be, that would, that, that sort of thing would just be available for the associates rather than the full members. There might be questions about the mission statement. I will apologize that even, even this mission statement didn't show up in our packet until this morning, but it's there. So if you want to look at it, you can see it. Any questions or concerns about the, the mission statement? There might be a public comment about the mission statement.
I was good with it until you talked about out-of-town people. And so I'm really excited to invite my friends from Cambridge, and Jamaica Plain, and Dorchester, who would love to be on committees in Acton. And so is this a precedent-setting case, or is it only for privileged people that live right across the land from, right across the boundary and for conservation land? Because I think that anybody's welcome to volunteer on a crew anytime they want, and they don't have to have official, official voting status. But I would very much like to invite a lot of people to come here and be part, and be members on boards and committees in Acton. So I hope that if you let this go through, that you will allow all boards and committees to also invite people from out of town to join Acton boards and committees as official voting members. Thank you.
Yep, that'll certainly be a topic if we just choose to discuss it at a future meeting. This is very particular to the land stewards, where the associates are, in a way, serving, in a way that overlaps with, with what staff do. They're out there with, you know, very sharp tools, destroying vegetation on conservation land, and we really want them to be covered by the town's liability insurance, so we make them associate members. The, and, yeah, and this particular case is just about, you know, someone who, who is able to be a land steward, who's, lives very close to a conservation land. It's really, particularly for the land stewards, where, where a lot of the work is actual work out in the conservation lands, it's important that people be relatively close by. Alyssa.
Thank you. So the associate members who are not Acton residents are not voting members, just want to make that note. And also, I have a question. In this document, it very clearly states that the associate members and the full members are covered by the town's liability insurance, but then there's another section that talks about volunteers who are not committee members, but it says nothing about liability insurance. So I'm wondering, are they also covered, or are they signing waivers? How are we protecting the town with, when these people are, as you said, using sharp tools to destroy vegetation on conservation land?
Well, we require them to be operating under the guidance of a land stewardship committee member, who is then in turn covered by insurance. We don't have them sign waivers, unless they are, there are certain special work trips, especially at the Arboretum, where we do have special waivers, or if the program is being run through the rec program, there are waivers. But often for the, for the regular old land stewards who are out there, you know, or volunteers who are out there assisting other land stewards, we, we just have them go out there and give them good safety tips.
So is that something that maybe we should consider doing? I guess that might be a question for the town manager.
I'm happy to have us, you know, you, I'm happy to have the LSC liaison bring that up with the town manager at any point to talk it through. Any other comments on the mission statement? No? See, did this one come with a cool motion that we could just read out loud? No. Would someone like to invent a motion that makes sense?
I move, I move to approve the, the Town of Acton Land Stewardship Mission Statement with a few changes noted.
I will second that.
Any more comments? All those in favor, please say yes or aye.
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed? Any abstentions? No? Okay, so we have clear, clear unanimous approval of the, the new mission statement. Let's see, sometimes it's good to remember follow-up steps. Alyssa, can you tell the land stewardship committee that we approved their new mission statement?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. The next one. Approve Middlesex County Retirement System request to increase cost of living adjustment for retirees. We got a memo about this, but I'm hoping that John could summarize it briefly, so we understand it together.
Yes, thank you. Within the last year, the, and said, could you ask your select board to approve this local option? And we need 23 of you to do so, for the, for the retirees to receive an increase in their cost of living adjustment. A one-time increase, but that, it compounds. So it helps them, but it also costs us money in our assessment. So the board actually talked about this in April, I believe, or a few months ago, and it was deferred to have comment from Finance Committee, from the Finance Committee, while we didn't receive a formal communication from the Finance Committee. A member was at the podium last week and did mention that the Finance Committee did not support this local adoption. However, also, I should note that since this, since that time, I got a note from the Middlesex County Retirement System indicating that the, the law is enacted, that the retirees will get their COLA increase, because they did achieve the threshold of 22 towns, and they asked that the Town of Acton still consider voting to support this as a sign of support for the retirees. And so that's where we're at tonight.
Thanks. So are there any questions about the situation we're in? I saw David and I saw Dean. Go for it. And Alyssa. Let's all talk about it.
So I, I brought this up to the Finance Committee, who discussed that the, the Finance Committee was not of one mind on this, right? There were a variety of opinions. Some of the things that they were concerned about is, some of this increase is unfunded, right? So it increased, they already have a, a liability problem in funding future benefits, and this just worsens that situation by a small amount, but, I mean, I think by 1%. But it's, this is only one increase, right? So that, that's an issue. I will also just say that in this, we speak for all, as I understand it, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, we speak for all the public entities in Acton. So we speak for the Water District and the School District in this case. So.
Yep. And I'll, and I'll remind us that no matter what we vote, the, the raise is going through. It's already been voted. But thank you.
Yeah, so first, a public disclosure. I do get retirement from this particular system. I will benefit from the action that has been taken, as does my wife. I inquired of Town Council as to how much I could be involved in this, and the guidance I got was that since there are about 300 Town of Acton retirees right now, and I'd only be one of them, and there are about 6,000 in the entire system, which I would be only one of them, they felt that my involvement in discussion of this would be appropriate, because it's such a, a small, I'd be such a small percentage of the entire system. I did also submit a public disclosure statement, it's on file in Town Clerk's office. I think specifically, we talk a lot about how we value town employees, and a week and a half ago, we had an event honoring some of the long-term town employees, and I think keeping faith with them and giving them this really minor cost of living adjustment in such extraordinary times, I think is keeping faith with those employees. Many town employees, if they're long-term employees, have not paid into Social Security, or the amount they've paid into Social Security has been so small, that they cannot depend upon Social Security as any meaningful sort of retirement income. So for somebody that spent many years in, in public service, this county retirement is the only game in town. Now, from my own employment, I was a fairly well-paid town employee, so this is not going to break me by any stretch of the imagination, but there are many blue-collar workers, clerical workers, people who have put in a lot of time, that don't have as deep pockets, and are really dependent upon this to keep faith. You know, I look at my friend Bill Clower over there, who, you know, dedicated his life to the town, and, you know, and paid, paid the price for it as well. Folks like that, that really deserve our support. So I think that, although certainly the, the vote to a certain extent is probably meaningless because we're gonna get it anyway, but I think it's really important that this board step up and let everybody know that we certainly appreciate all of our past, present, and future town employees. Also, I'd note the situation with school department employees that would qualify for this county retirement. School teachers are not covered under this, these would be more the administrative and people, clerical employees, custodial people. So it's, it's not, the school teachers have their own system, so this would just be for the, I would say, the paraprofessionals. So I hope that the board will vote to approve this. Thank you.
We might be ready to at least get the motion in play, and then we can make further comments on it. I see that there's a motion right there, written down, or maybe David would read it.
I move that Acton accept Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, a local option which allows for a one-time increase to the cost of living adjustment COLA granted to retirees in fiscal year 2023, from 3% to 5% of the system's $16,000 COLA base.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any final comments before we have a vote?
Yes, I just wanted to comment, thank you, Dean, for what you just said. I would just add a friendly amendment, that I don't think that this is a meaningless vote, but it's certainly symbolic, since the, the Act is already in place. I just wanted to make a comment that I reached out to the current FinCom chair to ask why the board, because I could not find the discussion in any of the tapes that I reviewed. And I was told that there was not enough information given to them in the memo, in order for them to make a determination of what the financial impact would be. So I would just suggest that in the future, when memos go to, because I know that it was postponed from May 8th to today, to allow FinCom to comment on it. So if we want to have a FinCom comment, we should give them all of the information they need to do so. So I just wanted to make sure that that was stated. So I just wanted to make sure that that was stated.
Thank you. David?
Just for clarification, they were given all the information that we had. They had additional follow-up questions, which they could not make, because they actually postponed it one meeting. They could not make it in time for this meeting. They did ask, actually asked the town manager after the fact, but then they couldn't come back and discuss it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Are there any more comments or questions? Any public comment?
Leo Fatchman, Wright Terrace. I'm getting a lot of exercise today, getting up and down. I just wanted to go off what Dean had said. My wife was a town employee. She was collecting retirement. She had worked as a systems analyst, nice-paying job, put a lot of money into social security. So when we started collecting, I couldn't believe the haircut social security took because of the money from the town. So I just want to support that. That's, like I said, I cannot believe the haircut she took from what she put into it. So, thank you.
Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes or aye.
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. We have unanimously passed that one. We have two more items before we get to the consent calendar and then the meeting eval. Approve use of remaining ARPA rental assistance funds for emergency assistance program. John, perhaps you could take us through this?
Thank you. Yes, so we're coming off several successful rental assistance programs using CARES funds a few years ago. And what we found, though, in the most recent allotment from ARPA, where the board allocated $50,000 in the current year and then $100,000 going forward, we found that the rent assistance program, while helpful, was too restrictive to help people with some of the things that they need help with, in addition to rent, things associated with living, that we just had to say no to. And so earlier this year, we asked the board to authorize us changing that, the use of that $50,000 from, expanding it from rather than just be rental assistance, but allow it to be used for an emergency assistance program. That change was very successful. We, at this point, have allocated, I believe, $46,000 of the 50. And so Laura Ducharme, who takes the lead on administering that program for us, has suggested that now's the time to ask the board to permission for us to actually change the rest of the funding to be used in the same format as emergency assistance, rather than just rental assistance. So there is a memo in the packet with a motion that you could consider passing, which would have the effect of changing the remaining $100,000 to emergency assistance funding instead of just rental assistance. And we hope you support this. Thanks.
Are there any concerns or questions about this from the board? Any comments from the public?
Hi, Madeline from Sation Way again. I'm here as vice chair of the Acton Human Services Committee. I am reading to you a statement endorsed by our Human Services Committee. The Acton Human Service Committee is charged with advising the select board in regard to Acton residents' human services needs and providing support to our Human Services Department. In both of these capacities, the Human Services Committee fully supports the community service coordinator's request that the remaining $100,000 of the ARPA rental assistance funds be approved for the purpose of helping Acton residents in need via financial grants to pay for unmet needs in areas of rent and in the expanded areas of mortgage, utilities, and childcare. We advise approval of this motion, both because of the demonstrated need that exists in the community at this time among Acton residents. And because of how successful this program has been thus far in providing indispensable support to dozens of Acton residents. And it is important that we continue to fund this program and provide these funds to the Human Services Department now, so that there is no interruption in services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, again, I am also in support of this, but also want you to consider putting a line item in for regular support, so when the ARPA monies run out, we don't forget people. We have, you know, however many tens of, how many thousands of people in the seniors, you know, 25% of the population with schools, with 80, what is it, 75, whatever it is, percentage of the budget. But what about the renters? You know, there's a significant portion of renters and people struggling with mortgages. I feel like it's time to up that EAP so that she has some money to actually give to people who are struggling. I can't tell you how many times I have made calls to Laura, to the town, to beg them to help somebody who's homeless, who's about to be evicted, who's struggling with medical bills, electric bills, shut off even though they're not supposed to. Just, please, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there someone on the board who would like to read this fabulous motion? And then we can discuss it even more?
I move that the select board approve the remaining $100,000 of the ARPA rental assistance funds to include the following categories: mortgage, utilities, and childcare.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any additional comments? All those in favor, please say yes or aye.
Aye.
Yes? All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? No. Okay. That's been moved and approved unanimously. Okay, next item. Discuss speaking assignments for Memorial Day event. I want to thank Dean for bringing this to my attention. And so we were able to get it on the agenda on time. There's varieties of ways for select board members to participate in the Memorial Day event, which starts at the high school and marches up to the town center and then down to Woodlawn Cemetery. It's traditional, or it's been the habit for the chair to make some remarks, and I'm very happy to do that. There's also room for people to help read the names of those who have served, who have died in the last year. And I wonder if any of the select board members would be interested in participating in that. And so I'm open to volunteers. David?
I'm happy to do that. I did that last year. But I'm also happy to, you know, share with anybody else who wants to do that.
Okay. Any other volunteers? If we get lots of volunteers, that's fine. We can, as David said, there's plenty of work to do. We can spread it around or give it to people that haven't done it before.
I'd be happy to do it as well.
Great.
You know, we can split the list as many ways as possible.
Fran, Alyssa?
I'm planning to go.
Great, okay.
I'm happy to volunteer. Do they, do you read them while they're playing taps? Because that could be really emotional for me.
I don't remember, but thanks for raising the concern. I'm already concerned about getting through my speech without crying, but I figure having a guy cry in a speech is probably modeling good behavior anyway. Yeah. David?
As I remember, your remarks will be in town center construction permitting. And the names are actually read at the cemetery. So, and they're, I don't think it's the same time as taps, but close to that.
So sometimes we have plenty of volunteers to potentially read names. We can figure it out there. Alyssa?
Fran, you and I can just hold hands and cry on each other's shoulders.
Yeah, it's a very solemn and sad event, so it's, you know, tears are welcome. I think that's all I need to know. Dean, you've been, Dean and David, you've been through this routine more recently than I have. Is there anything else we need to figure out here in public?
Yeah. My recollection is usually that the remarks recent years by the chair has actually been at the cemetery. Just in large part because the traffic noise on Main Street tends to blur you out, which maybe you want that. But usually, it's a very quick pause in the center. But in any case, keep your notes handy.
Great, thank you. I'll let Jim McCray know that we're, I'm ready to speak and we're all ready to read names, whatever's helpful. Thank you. So for these consent items, I've already heard of a couple that we might be holding. I think I'll just mention them. Number 20, which is not quite ready for prime time, because it needs to go back to the Cemetery Commission first. And potentially Minutes? Is that still a live issue, Alyssa? You were mentioning that to me as a possibility.
All good. I sent the edits to Lisa.
Okay. So let me read through these, and if there's any additional ones we want to hold, we can do that. Affirm Conservation Commission as holder of conservation restriction on 549 Main Street. Approve meeting minutes, April 24th, 2023. Appoint Paulina Nibby as a full member and Jane Moosebrooker as an associate member to the Open Space Committee with terms to end on June 30th, 2026. Appoint Ann Forbes as a full member from Associate to the Acton 250 Committee with a term to end on September 30th, 2026. Approve request for use of town roads, bikes not bombs, September 10, 2023. Accept donation from Dunkin' Donuts for $1,000 to support the 2023 Summer Concert Series and Events. Accept donation from Friends of Gardner Field for $55,000 towards the Gardner Field Playground installation. Accept donation from Congregation Beth Elohim for $180 towards the Acton Pride Festival. And 20 is being held. So how about a motion for the ones that aren't being held? David?
I move to approve consent items 12 through 19 inclusive.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say yes or aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? No, that's another unanimous one. Thank you. So this weird meeting eval thing. How this will be structured is, we'll each get a chance to say things that might be either one of three categories at least. Things that we did that worked out pretty well, that we'd like to learn from, we'd like, maybe like to do that sort of thing again. Two, things that we did that, you know, maybe didn't work out so well, or we'd like to do them differently next time. And finally, follow-ups, like things that we came out of our discussion that we might want to put on an agenda for a future meeting, just to get them said out loud here in a public meeting so we can all hear them. I have a bunch of notes, but I'll go last. I just will say in general that this is a chance for me to learn as chair, so don't hold back. Let's just go right down the line, then you know when you're going to be speaking. It'll be real easy. Alyssa, you got any thoughts?
Yes, I appreciate that we are ending at 10 instead of 11. And I think that I would like to revisit as a board our entertainment licensing process, especially following up on the True West license that we just approved tonight, to see if perhaps we need to get the state Public Safety Office approval as well.
Thanks. David, any thoughts?
No, I don't have anything. It went fine for me.
Great, thanks. Fran?
I think it went fine as well. I have nothing to add.
Okay. Dean?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you kept people on a tight time schedule, which I think that worked out really well. But this was a fairly mild meeting agenda. So I would suggest that you consider in the future, especially if you get into things that are really controversial, you know, like car dealerships will be coming up, that as folks from the public come in, make comments, they only get one bite at the apple, rather than, you know, walking back and forth and back and forth. I think, you know, at some point, you know, it's good to get the input, but I don't think that we necessarily need to get involved in the dialogue with folks. You know, so I hope that, you know, as much as possible, try to limit the repetitious comments from the same people coming up again and again. As far as the follow-up things, I still think, in light of the comments that were made earlier in the meeting in Citizens Concerns, I hope that the town manager will come back after the Pride Festival is done and, you know, we see what happens with any of the drag entertainment and just sort of a check back in, you know? Was it really bad? Was it really good? Was it kind of a nothing burger? And I think that could help us, you know, dealing with all areas of the community, say, you know, it's, either it's a big thing or it's not a big thing. And it would help inform us as far as plans for future events. I don't think, I personally don't want to get involved in content moderation for programs the Recreation Commission is sponsoring, and I don't think any of you folks would want to. But, you know, if it seems like there's some bright line that's been crossed and, you know, in retrospect, it needs to be reconsidered, then we can reconsider it. But I really want to hear from the manager, you know, the quick update after the event. That's it.
Thanks. So some thoughts. I did an informal adding up of the estimated times. I thought we were going to be ending maybe 15 minutes earlier. As I looked at the times, it was mostly because we just love talking about trash. I mean, I hadn't anticipated how long that was going to be. But, so that's a learning for me in the future, that, you know, if you're invoking the transfer station, passions are running high. I really appreciated having the motions written down. One of the trade-offs that John discussed with me is that for some boards, that feels like stepping on the toes of the board. So I just want to say out loud to emphasize that these are not, we don't have to go with those motions. We can change them, we can have alternate motions, we can have amendments. It's just a starting point for us to consider, but I thought it was really helpful. What else? I told people time limits, but I was not very good at actually doing the timing. When I was mentioning the notion of having timing, someone reminded me that, you know, at time meeting, they have those nice bright little lights with the timers, and the people know exactly how much time they have left. They get, you know, red, yellow, and green lights. I don't know if that's something we can do here, but it would certainly be easier than having me go to my phone and trying to find the timer app and not doing a very good job of it. What else? I think it's awesome that we just turned captions on. I mean, if we could get all of our goals accomplished as easily as changing a setting at Zoom, that would be just awesome. So I think we should have that as a goal, that everything be as easy as just changing a setting. What else? Thanks for participating in the meeting eval. There's probably at least one more motion we should make.
Is this going to count as one of the 10? With deference to all the trash talk, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Please say yes or aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? No. We're out of here. We're done. Thank you.